Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this February 14th meeting of the Planning Commission. If you'd all stand and please join me in the flag salute.
.........................................................
Thank you. Roll call, please, here.
All right. Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Haugie?
Here.
And Mr. Moss?
Here.
Report from the Planning Director. Morning, EJ.
Good morning. EJ Valdi, Planning Services Division. I think Mr. Severson, Commissioner Severson, was going to also try to make it down today, but given the weather over the summit, I'm not sure that's going to happen, especially given my drive up here this morning. So, anyway, glad you're all here to make it. Just a few quick items this morning. Update on a board meeting that happened last Tuesday, or actually on February 5th. As you recall, the third-party appeal of the HABAD of Roseville was scheduled at that hearing. The board did not hear that item that day. There was an issue with public noticing and the 300-foot surrounding property notice. So what they did, they continued that to an open date, and a new date has not been set yet for that. The next board meeting is going to be February 26th. The board will consider the Placer Vineyards Property 1A Specific Plan Amendment at that hearing. That's scheduled for 10:10 that morning. And then, the other item is the first of several zoning text amendments, which your commission recommended approval of last year. As you recall, the board, when we got to the board late last year, they decided they wanted to break that up into increments, just so it's more digestible to the public and to the board itself. So, at that hearing, we're going to be taking the ground-mounted solar and cellular facilities, those zoning text amendments. And that is scheduled for 10:30 on February 26th. So, our upcoming Planning Commission meetings, you might be happy to hear that we will not be going to Tahoe on February 28th. We're going to be canceling that meeting. So the next Planning Commission meeting that is scheduled will be here in Auburn. That's going to be on March 14th. Couple projects that might be of interest that will be on that agenda, the Placer County Government Center Master Plan, and then also one of the White Hawk projects down in Granite Bay. So for today's meeting, we have two draft EIR items that are scheduled. I know the chairman will go over the protocol prior to each of those items today. But for those in attendance that would like to provide public comment, we do have sign-in sheets over here to my left. I've already seen a number of people utilize those, so anybody else who wants to get on those lists, please, now's a good time to do that. And also, you'll notice we have a court reporter here, who is here to, for the first item. She says that she can go quite long, an hour and a half, but at some point, if she needs a break, we may need to take a short intermission. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
All right, we can get started. Thank you.
All right. Now is the time for a meeting for public comment. Anybody who would like to make a comment that is regarding anything that is not on today's agenda is welcome to come forward and do so.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Good morning. My name is Delana Rude. I live in North Auburn on Kramer Road. My family's ranch is directly across Bell Road from the entrance to the proposed Hidden Falls Regional Park Expansion Parking Lot for 100 cars, 40 trucks and trailer rigs, a stable, bike concession, restrooms, and more. I am also part of the Protect Rural Placer Group. According to CAL FIRE, almost 85% of fires in California are human-caused, and of that 7% are arson. A wildland fire can travel from about 6 miles an hour up to 14 miles an hour, perhaps more. This proposed trail expansion is in a rural area of Auburn that has limited access. The total of the proposed Hidden Falls Regional Park Expansion Trail Extension is to cover 3,700 acres with 60 miles of trails. There is 3,600 acres of private property right in the center known as Big Hill. This area covers dry oak woodlands and heavily wooded brushy hills and gorges that are extremely combustible with very little access for firefighters. We believe with 3,700 acres and 60 miles of trails, there could easily be over 1,000 people on a single busy day on these trails. It will be very likely that some hikers will make it a two-day hike and leave the trail to camp out. This will create a high potential for wildland fire from campfires. Additionally, there is a high potential for homeless camps in such a large trail network. And I might tell you that we've already had homeless people camping on the backside of our ranch on Orr Creek. All of this is to go on with no park ranger, no law enforcement to monitor the activity in the Big Hill area. The proposed expansion is less than four miles from the densely populated Highway 49 Business District, the county facilities here at DeWitt, the hospital, several schools, and a multitude of convalescent facilities, as well as thousands of people who work and live in the area. Remember, a fire, wildland fire, can travel at a rate of 6 to 14 miles an hour. Can you imagine trying to evacuate all of North Auburn in an hour? Perhaps you remember the 49er Fire right across the highway here eight or nine years ago. I watched it from a hilltop, and I can tell you that I and my neighbors were pretty scared about the possibility of that leapfrogging. We have been safe so far because there is no public access to this remote wildland area. Unsupervised public access will clearly increase the potential for fire. Our other big concerns are the roads and cost. I ask that you recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they deny this regional park expansion. By doing so, Placer County will show they are taking steps to protect the people that live here and prevent a catastrophic fire. Thank you.
This is Valentine's Day, and I've never done anything like this on a Valentine's Day, so this is unusual. My name is Jean Piet. I've been here before. I live at 5395 Bell Road, which is next door to 5345 Bell Road. And I have found that most of the people that listen to us, if they're listening, if you're listening, have never had any questions, have never had any comments. I realize this is a formal meeting, but it's very difficult when you're living in a place where you have all of these fears of what's going to be happening, and you get absolutely nothing. This environmental impact review is report is taking forever, and one of the reasons for that is, as you heard, the Parks Administrator, after listening to all of us who object to this development in our community, has been adding and adding and adding as things come up to the contract. And now, he's gotten approval for a $50,000 addition in order to complete the environmental impact. That's necessary in order to finally get it, if we get it. And if he stops adding once we keep telling him what we object to. Also, you may have gotten a little note from me showing that the survey that came out of their department is totally inapplicable. There are not enough responses in that type of a survey, when you look at the size of our county, to really be significant. So there's an awful lot that has been going on from day one that is inappropriate and is now on behalf of the property owners and the local residents. I've asked people, commissioners and others, have you gone out and looked at the property? Do you know what we're talking about? Have you looked around to see all of the other properties surrounding this? When you turn off a Bell Road onto 5345, there's a small driveway. It's not real wide. It only goes as far as the house on the top 10 acres. There has never been a road in this particular area. That's not a road, it's a driveway. And the back part of the property, which is the 40 acres, has never had a road. So this is not an appropriate access. Thank you.
Thank you, EJ. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? That item's not on the agenda today.
My name is Wally Gaffney. I live at 4961...
Sorry, Wally.
That's okay. I live real close to this proposed parking lot. I can get there in three minutes. What we have here in my mind is a couple problems. One, it's zoned residential ag. I don't know where a parking lot comes in to play there. The other issue I think we have is on Mira's Road, the other access and parking lot, has a lot of problems still. So I'm not sure why we're opening up another can of worms when we haven't fixed the first. Anyway, I vehemently oppose, as much as all my neighbors here. I oppose that Twilight Parking Lot, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we will close this portion and move on to the consent agenda. You have a second? You have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, and a second by Mr. Haugie. So, Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yeah.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
And Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're now coming up to our 1005 item, the Placer County Sunset Area Plan and Placer Ranch Specific Plan. When it gets time for public comment, I would like to remind you that these are comments only on the environmental impact document. We will ask that you sign up prior to, and wait till your name is called to speak. We would limit these comments to three minutes for an individual. If you represent a group or organization, that time limit will be extended to five minutes. We're not going to yield or share or allocate other people's time towards an individual already speaking, so we'll stick with the three and five-minute limits. The yellow light is giving you your last-minute warning and telling you it's time to kind of wrap up your thoughts and do it, but we will try to hold very strictly with these time limits. And I think that's kind of got the basic rules covered. It's all yours. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, members of the commission. My name is Crystal Jacobson. I'm a principal planner with the Planning Services Division, here today to present to you on the draft environmental impact report for the Sunset Area Plan and Placer Ranch Specific Plan. As you had just noted, the meeting purpose here today is to receive comment on the draft environmental impact report prepared for this project. The CEQA guidelines do encourage counties and cities to hold public hearings on environmental documents, and so it has been our policy for years to do that. And so really, this hearing is, again, just to focus on the draft environmental impact report, certainly here to answer questions that you might have on that analysis, and then to accept comment, but not to get into the merits of the project. So I am joined today by a number of folks who are part of our planning team. Michelle Kingsbury with the County Executive Office is here. She'll be assisting with the presentation along with Vance Jones from McCann Sompes, a consultant that helped with the preparation of the Placer Ranch Specific Plan project. So he will also present. And then we also have our environmental consultants, Assent Environmental here today. Mike Parker is a lead on that. And various technical experts. So if something comes up on an item that I am not able to adequately answer your questions, we can certainly call on someone else to do that. So we have technical experts on staff and also consultants in the room. So this slide just kind of highlights the public notification process for this. It's very standard in our office, property owners within 300 feet of the project boundaries. All folks who have commented, this process has been underway since 2000, late 2016. So we have a number of folks on our email distribution list, so those folks have been provided comment, along with some key stakeholders, the cities and other agencies. And then, I did want to point out, we did provide copies of the DEIR to a number of different libraries. That's, we kind of went above what we typically do for the, providing those documents at the libraries, and we also provided some copies for checkout, so people were able to actually check out the copies and take them home with them. This is a graphic that shows the existing vicinity of the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, so it's out in West Placer, I think, as you know. So the area in red is the existing boundary of the Sunset, what we call the Sunset Industrial Area Plan Boundary. We have the city of Lincoln to the north, city of Rockland to the east, and the city of Roseville to the south here. This area that you see, kind of in gray or purple, is the Placer Ranch area, so it nests within the Sunset. This slide here shows the proposed boundary. You can see it has been expanded here, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But here is the Placer Ranch site, so it's within the south area of Sunset. And here you'll see 65 and then 80 over here. So by way of background, this area has always been anticipated for development. It's largely slated for industrial, although there is some agriculturally-zoned areas to the west of the site. And so the intent really in the existing Sunset Industrial Area Plan is that this site is to promote economic development and provide an opportunity for job growth in the region. So there's a lot of policies, existing policies in that plan that speak to that. So the long term really dates back, it actually dates back over 50 years to create that employment hub in South Placer. The idea is to capitalize on the proximity of Highway 55, the rail lines, and the nearby growing communities in West Placer. So the first formally adopted plan was this 1997 plan that we are updating now. In 2002, Placer Ranch partnered with Sac State to bring a university to that site. So Placer Ranch has been kind of in and out of process for a long time, and I think Michelle will touch on that. But then in 2014, our board initiated an update to the Sunset Area Plan, Industrial Area Plan. And really, the purpose was to rebrand that area and establish a new vision and development plan. The objective is really to reposition the land, to attract some new users, achieve economic development, and create jobs. And then Placer Ranch was added to the work program in 2016 by direction from our board, or with direction from our board. And really, the Placer Ranch project has provisions for a public university, critical backbone infrastructure, which would really catalyze the job creation and economic growth in the Sunset area. So that was really the reasoning behind that decision. So just some key visioning factors for this project. Really, the three key components is employment, so job creation, a university on the Placer Ranch site, which I will let Michelle and Vance talk about, and then housing. And I'll touch on the housing in the Sunset Area Plan in just a minute, but the Placer Ranch Specific Plan does include a town center, university, and then housing in addition to that. So, again, job creation, kind of trying to create a job-housing balance within the region. Just as an overview of the work program, the Sunset Area Plan is a policy document. It includes a set of implementing zoning regulations, corridor design standards. There was an existing condition report prepared, economic market analysis, as you see here, a number of different documents and tech studies that went into the preparation of the plan. The Placer Ranch Specific Plan has the specific plan document, design guidelines, development standards, in addition to those tech studies, a utilities master plan, and then at the end, there will be a development agreement prepared for that project. And then still underway is a capital improvement and finance plan, and then, of course, the environmental document, which analyzes both, as you see in the document there. So it analyzes the Sunset Area Plan at a programmatic level, and then the Placer Ranch at a project level, with the exception to the Sac State piece, which is really analyzed more at a programmatic level because they intend to come in with some future master planning of that site, at which time they would be subject to CEQA. So this just shows both plans combined into one map here. So, again, this is the Placer Ranch. You can see it's a lot more specific in terms of the land uses proposed here. This is the university site here, and this is the Sunset, and I will talk a little bit about those land uses in the Sunset in just a minute here. In terms of the tasks or documents completed to date, a lot of work has gone into this project to get to where we are now. But the last time we were before you, your commission, was back in February of 2018, when we had released preliminary drafts of the two plans. And so we presented that to your commission to seek some input, and since that time, we've really now been preparing this document that's before you today. We did prepare a couple of different administrative draft EIRs. I will say that we have worked really closely with our key stakeholders, namely the cities and agencies, governmental agencies, just to make sure that this document was prepared in coordination with them. Probably going to be drinking a lot of water, sorry about that. Okay, so I'm just now going to talk about the Sunset Area Plan before I turn it over to Michelle to talk about Placer Ranch. So the sun, this is really what consists of the Sunset Area Plan, as you have before you today. So the area plan is, again, a policy document, and it covers these different resource chapters that you see there. And then we have that implementing zoning at the end, and some appendices, which is the corridor, design standards, and guidelines. And then, again, the two, the pending documents are still underway. So this is the land use map of Sunset. And really, the big changes that you'll see from the existing plan, you know, most of this is all zoned industrial today. We do have industrial remaining here. This is the existing built environment that's largely industrial. Up in here, this is our preserve and mitigation reserve land. There are existing preserved areas there and mitigation banks, and so that was reflective of that landscape. But the two big changes is this area here, which is an entertainment mixed-use district. And then right here is Innovation Center that you'll see on both sides of this. This actually has a development reserve on it, so any future planning here would be required to go through a specific plan process. This is our zoning map. I intended to implement that larger land plan, so you can see the, oops, excuse me, the zone districts are really consistent with the land use designations that I just So real quick, I just want to touch on some notable components. Again, I had presented this before your commission last year, but I'll touch on them really quick. What is a, the plan includes an expansion of the Sunset Area Plan Boundary that I had shown you before, that was with direction from our board. So it's about 325 acres to the west that is being included in the plan area. We are also proposing an increase in density. This would be for the Sunset and Placer Ranch, and it would be from 21 units to 30 dwelling units per acre for high-density residential, general, commercial, and tourist resort commercial land uses. So it would really allow, so this would be a general plan amendment that would allow the Sunset Area Plan and the Placer Ranch Specific Plan to set their own development standards to go to that density. And that density is consistent with state housing law for Placer County. We are seen as a metropolitan area and organization, and so we are required to show density capacity up to 30 dwelling units per acre. And then we also have a refinement to a public facility buffer requirement that is in the general plan, so we are proposing a change to that buffer, which I will touch on here in a minute. But it would update residential, commercial, and recreational uses near the landfill site, so it's really the proximity of those uses to the property, the property boundary of the landfill. And then we also have a level of service change, oops, I'll touch on the residential use in just a minute, but a level of service change, which would allow for a level of service change of E at major intersections, and really focuses on reduction of what we call vehicle miles traveled. And then the two, two other changes are a residential use allowance in the Sunset area. Under the existing zoning, residential uses are not allowed in the Sunset area, with exception to the farm. There's some areas that are zoned farm right now, and you could have one single-family home on a site there. But our board saw value in trying to provide some opportunity for workforce housing in the Sunset area, and so there is a provision that would allow residential uses. They would be subject to landfill buffer standards, and they would, they are all required to have a use permit and required to be subordinate to an employment-generating use on site. So it's really that kind of work-housing balance is what we're trying to achieve there. And then for the scale and height standards, we have some zoning changes that would allow an increase in height in many zones within the Sunset area and the Placer Ranch area. This just shows you, this is a table out of the Sunset Area Plan. I will point out, these buffer standards actually live in our general plan, but we have also included them in the Sunset document. So the change right now, under our existing general plan, this, the solid waste disposal site buffer for residential is one mile, and so we're proposing to reduce that to 2,000 feet. However, there's a footnote here that it can be considered on a case-by-case basis to be as close as 1,000 with approval of a specific plan, master plan, or development agreement. So for Placer Ranch, their specific plan is the tool to do that. So for Placer Ranch, their specific plan is the tool to do that. And then for commercial and recreation, these numbers have not changed here, the 1,500, but what has changed is that we added a footnote here that those uses within the buffer zones may be considered on a case-by-case basis with approval of, again, a specific plan, master plan, or development agreement. This just shows those buffers. This exhibit is actually out of the Sunset Area Plan. You can see the 2,000 feet here, 1,500. I've also overlaid that on to the Placer Ranch site in case you wanted to, you had any questions about that. So real quick, I just wanted to touch on Placer Parkway because it is a key, I would say, component of the plan. This connects State Route 65 at the Whitney Ranch Parkway to the State Route 70 and 99 in Sutter County West. I'm going to actually flip to this exhibit because it's better to look at. So Caltrans and the city of Rockland have already constructed the Whitney Ranch Parkway's State Route 65 interchange, that's this area over here. Placer County Department of Public Works is proposing to construct that, the second half of the interchange and the Placer Parkway multilane expressway to Foothills Boulevard, so what you see here in this, like, cross, this hatched area. We have received the NEPA and CEQA clearance for that, for a project level for Phase One of that, and our Department of Public Works is working on final design. They do anticipate that to be under construction within two years, actually. And so the remainder of the Parkway would be designed and constructed over time as funding becomes available. I do want to point out that this Parkway does serve existing development within the region. It's really what we see as critical infrastructure, provides improved circulation, and is really seen as a critical regional circulation element within West Placer. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Vance to touch on Placer Ranch, and then they will hand it back to me to walk through the environmental document.
Good morning, commissioners. Michelle Kingsbury with the county executive office, and I'm the other half of Crystal, the project manager on the Placer Ranch side. I'll do a brief introduction and then turn the presentation over for the Placer Ranch component to Vance Jones, who works with McKay &amp; Somp's Engineering, who is our consultant on this project. So as Crystal mentioned, the board took the unique position in 2016 to insert itself more or less in a developer role to continue to process the Placer Ranch specific plan. And I'll go through kind of a lot of the notable reasons why we did that, and then we'll delve into the actual land plan itself. So in terms of a lot of these items, Crystal has already mentioned, but I think it's important to reinforce the goals and objectives of the Placer Ranch specific plan, the first one being to complement the Sunset efforts and the efforts that have been in place for decades to turn the Sunset area into a regional employment hub. We provide for a balance of mixed jobs and housing balance in the plan area, as well as the other key item is to provide for a site for the satellite campus of Sac State to be housed in that area. We do have a number of acres set aside for open space preserves, and we are PCCP compliant, i.e. that we are in that yellow area, if all of you are very familiar with the PCCP map, but the area designated for growth. These projects are, Placer Ranch and Sunset are both wholly within those yellow areas. We do, as Crystal mentioned, provide for approximately three miles of reservation right-of-way for the Placer Parkway to continue that effort along the northern border of the plan area. There's a number of transit routes. And Vance will get into more detail on a lot of these items and designation of the BRT aligned through the, to the plan area as well. We've got a regional-serving bikeway path network with connection up to existing facilities, as well as providing for connections within, into the Sunset Area Plan, as well as the adjacent jurisdictions. It does provide, as Crystal mentioned, for a town center juxtaposed next to the planned university site, that is more, a little bit denser, your high-density residential units within that area. Does provide for, as Crystal mentioned, we are underway, we have a draft, and we're currently refining it in terms of both fiscal impact, as well as the public facility side of things and how things will be financed, to try and provide for a fiscally responsible plan. There's a number of school sites, there's, excuse me, two school sites, one in elementary, one in middle school, in addition to the university site that are designated within the plan area. And last but not least, parks, open space, that are in compliance with our general plan standards of five acres per thousand for each of one of those. Obviously, one of the major, if not the major reason the board chose to insert itself in the Placer Ranch specific plan processing was the opportunity to provide for a satellite site for the Sacramento State University. It provides for the donation of approximately 300 acres. You'll see in the land plan we'll get to next, it's the light blue color right in the middle of the land plan. It's anticipated that the first phase would include between 500 and 2,500 Sac State students and 1,000 Sierra College students. It's planned for a Sierra College transfer center on campus, where it's almost seamless where students can go both to Sierra College and Sac State in one location. Over a 20-year horizon, we expect about 17,000 students broken up between 12,000 for Sac State and 5,000 for Sierra College. But the ultimate build-out would be projected to be 30,000 students, broken up between 25 and 5, between Sac State and Sierra College. However, as Crystal mentioned, it is a programmatic analysis related to the university site, and they would come back later on with their master planning efforts and tear off the environmental document. This is an exhibit of the land plan, and with this, I'm going to transition over to Vance Jones of McKay &amp; Somp's to provide a more detailed description of the land uses and land plan, and certainly we're available to answer any questions after that, and then Crystal will come back and conclude the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Michelle put up here for your consideration is the land use plan for Placer Ranch. Placer Ranch is actually about 2,200 acres of the larger Sunset Industrial Area, and I'll start by just quickly orienting you to some of the roadways that lead into the plan area. Along the southern edge of Placer Ranch is existing limits for the city of Roseville. There are some existing roadways that serve the plan area. A portion of Sunset Boulevard here comes in from the east that connects to Highway 65. And then there's a portion of Foothills Boulevard that stems from the terminus of Sunset Boulevard. It extends northward to Athens Avenue, all within the Sunset area. And then right through the middle of the plan area is Fitment Road, which is an existing two-lane facility. All of the balance of the roadway shown here on the land use plan would be improved and/or expanded through the development of the Placer Ranch area, so that includes the extension of Sunset Boulevard through the plan area to connect to the city of Roseville to the east. They've actually got a specific plan called the Ameruso Ranch specific plan that's been approved within the city of Roseville that Sunset Boulevard would eventually connect to. The same with the newly construction of Campus Park Boulevard, which would provide an east-west arterial and collector roadway system within the plan area that parallels Placer Parkway. And both Crystal and Michelle have mentioned the right-of-way provisions for Placer Parkway that are included within Placer Ranch. There's about 158 acres associated with the Placer Parkway right-of-way. That's about a 312-foot right-of-way width. It's a corridor established by the plan area that allows this Parkway to get constructed in the long term as plans and funding become available. As Michelle mentioned, the obvious component of Placer Ranch is the 300-acre blue site, which is for Sac State, right in the center of the plan area, aligned along Fitment Road. To the north of that, and nestled against Placer Parkway, is what we're calling the Campus Park Employment Center. That's about 335 acres of non-residential uses, could generate about 4.5 million square feet of non-residential uses at full build-out. And it does have a, and I'll talk to this a little bit more, a mixed-use approach, so it could support professional office campuses, research and development, warehousing, light industry uses, and even some limited commercial uses. And then here, just to the south of the Campus Park Employment Center, and immediately east of the university, is what we're calling the Town Center District. And that's got a mixture of uses of both commercial mixed-use, as well as higher-density residential uses, on about a 200-acre area that are intended to ultimately form a downtown-like environment that's purposely sited in proximity to the employment center and the university. The balance of the plan area, you can see there's a lot of yellow, those are the low-density residential uses. Those are focused primarily to the west of Fitment Road. The light green color that you see here is the open space preserves that are included throughout the plan area. The light blue parcels are, this is an elementary school site and a middle school site. The green parks here, the green parcels are park parcels. There's seven neighborhood parks provided throughout the plan area. The couple instances, we've got the larger parks sited adjacent to schools on purpose, so you could maximize on joint-use recreation activities there. And then smaller park spaces sited throughout the residential neighborhoods, so there's always a park space within a close distance to a residential neighborhood. Most notably, there's a pocket of residential here along the southern edge of the plan area, which is for an active adult community. Another pocket here along the eastern edge of the plan area for a smaller active adult community, and the parks within those communities would more than likely develop as private recreation centers that serve those active adult communities. What's important to point out here as well is that this land use plan has evolved a little bit since the commission last saw it last February. Some of the key changes that were made to the plan in response to various comments received last year, as well as working with some of the adjacent jurisdictions, are over here in this area of the plan, well, first and foremost, we pulled all of the school and residential uses outside of the 2,000-foot buffer that was established for the landfill facility. So what resulted there was this school site slid southward and now is aligned along Sunset Boulevard. That park grew. Some of the land uses up here were adjusted, they were no longer residential land uses, but instead campus park, commercial and park uses. Over on the eastern edge of the plan area, Foothills Boulevard was realigned pursuant to discussions with Roseville City staff. The alignment of Foothill Boulevard used to come down like this on the prior plan, and it now has been shifted to the east a little bit to utilize the Duluth corridor through the portion of the Sunset Area Plan here. Ultimately, that would connect with the existing northern terminus of Foothills Boulevard located to the south in the city of Roseville. In addition, we introduced some new residential along the eastern edge of the plan area. That active adult community that I mentioned used to be labeled as a campus park. And so we've done overall just some rebalancing of the land uses within the project for a couple of reasons, to make sure that we have a good mix of residential uses, to pull the residential uses outside of the 2,000-foot buffer. And then also, we increased the amount of park acreage to be consistent with general plan policy, because the prior plan had a slight shortfall that was originally intended to be met within Lufy's. This plan stands on its own, it meets general plan requirements of the five acres per thousand. Moving quickly into a land use summary, for residential, we've got 5,636 units allocated to the Placer Ranch component of the Sunset Area Plan. About 1,000 of those are in an age-restricted land use category, and about 1,500 of those are in the high-density residential category. Most of those HDR units are focused in the Town Center District, and that number also includes 300, they're called reserve units, but they're really floating units that could be allocated to any parcel within the Town Center District. So if, as the Town Center builds out, some of the commercial sites want to introduce a residential component, or some of the HDR sites want to have a density bonus or something, that gives county staff the ability to grant those density bonuses. For the non-residential component, all in, between the university and the campus park and the commercial uses, the plan allocates about 8.4 million square feet of non-residential units, excuse me, non-residential square footage, which could equate to upwards of 15,000 new jobs added to this plan area. Those numbers are slightly lower than in the plan that you saw last February. We used to have about 9.5 million square feet. I should point out, too, that the residential unit allocation has dropped as well with the shifts in the land use plan. It used to be about 5,800 units, and we've dropped about 200 units with the current plan. In addition to that, we're providing a significant amount of open space and parks to meet the county's general plan requirements. In fact, we're providing more open space than is needed by the general plan. And then also, we've noted here a separate line item for the Placer Parkway corridor, that's about 158 acres that's allocated for the future right-of-way for Placer Parkway. I'll touch on this very, very briefly because I've hit on it a lot already. Residential units, again, we've got about 5,600 units allocated throughout the plan area for residential. We've got several school sites planned, a 10-acre elementary school site, 22-acre middle school site, and then we've got several other public facility sites that in aggregate total about 10 acres for various needs that support the community. We've got a site for a large water storage tank, recycled water storage tank, groundwater wells, other facilities like that that the county will need to maintain a land area like this. Parks and open space, again, we've got seven neighborhood parks included in the development plan, nearly 240 acres of open space preserves, and another 26 acres allocated for paseos. Paseos, for those that aren't familiar with that term, it's very, very similar to a park. Just think of it as a long linear park. It's developed much like a park, but has more passive recreation opportunities. And within the land plan, those features provide more trail linkages to connect to neighborhoods with schools and other features. Campus park, I'll touch on that in a minute. That, again, is a large employment center component of Placer Ranch, and Michelle already touched on the 301-acre site that's allocated for Sac State's university in the center of the plan area. Crystal touched on the general plan amendments that are associated with Placer Ranch. Again, the increase in the density for HDR is received by Placer Ranch, particularly in the Town Center District, where we expect at the higher, the highest density residential land uses would occur. And then also, the height limits for buildings, particularly in the Campus Park District, the general plan would be amended to allow those buildings to become higher than the current zoning would allow. Crystal touched on the 2,000-foot buffer from the landfill. We, like I said, we did revise the land use plan to pull all of the residential and school uses outside of that 2,000-foot buffer. And even though we have a specific plan and development agreement that could allow those uses to get as close as 1,000 feet, we just felt it was better planning to keep everything outside the 2,000-foot level, so we're not seeking any special considerations up to 1,000 feet with the current plan that's before you. This slide here highlights the Campus Park District. Again, that's about 335 acres located on the northern edge of the Placer Ranch plan area, aligned along Placer Parkway purposefully, so it has good visibility from this future regional-serving roadway. Again, about 4.5 million square feet of non-residential uses could ultimately develop here. Community employment overall, like I mentioned before, about 15,000 jobs could be created through the implementation and build-out of Placer Ranch. Then I'll touch briefly on the Town Center District here. Really, the notion here is, we've got about a 200-acre area that's adjacent to the university and the Campus Park Employment Center. Campus, excuse me, Campus Park Employment Center is immediately to the north, and the university is immediately to the west of this district. Really, it's the area north of Sunset Boulevard, kind of sandwiched in between Sunset, the Campus Park Employment Center, and the university, where the highest intensity and density of uses are planned. Adjacent to the university, the commercial mixed-use parcels there are intended to develop like a small downtown setting with commercial buildings, maybe mixed with residential, that feel like a small downtown. That would be linked with a main street through a high-density residential area to some more commercial mixed-use parcels that are aligned along the Foothills Boulevard corridor. Really, the thinking there is, is that on the west edge of this district is the downtown environment, on the east edge of this district is where you would have more traditional suburban neighborhood-serving shopping center, like a grocery store anchor. But the whole district is anchored by a central village green that could be programmed by county parks for farmers' markets or concerts in the park, once this area develops, and all of that is surrounded by higher intensity, density residential uses. This slide really hits on the bikeway network planned with Placer Ranch. If you focus on the green dashed lines here, that's the Class 1 street-separated bikeway system that's located either in parks, open space corridors, and those paseo linkages that I mentioned. And that's a 10-foot-wide pathway with a four-foot decomposed granite shoulder for joggers and walkers that thread through all the open space areas and link up the various residential neighborhoods to the schools and parks and university. In addition to that, there's the, what the pink line work on this exhibit shows are all the trails that are located in the landscape corridors adjacent to roadways. So in total, between those two systems, you've got about 22 miles of street-separated pathways that are provided in the plan area. And then in addition to that, the light blue dashed line work represents the on-street Class 2 bike lanes that are geared more for the bicycle commuters, and those are provided on all major backbone roads, including arterials and collector streets. This slide highlights all of the open space parks and school sites in the plan area. I've hit on those briefly, but again, we've got an elementary school site on the far west of the plan, middle school site there, university site in the central, central to the plan area. All of the open space preserves are shown here as well in light green, and you can see- And you can see through the university site, there's actually going to be some open space preserves that'll happen as the university develops, too, because that's part of a larger interconnected system here. And then as well as the neighborhood parks are illustrated on this diagram. Major roadways, as I mentioned before, there are several existing roads within the plan area. Those are shown in dark blue, the connection of Sunset Boulevard out to Highway 65, and the extension of Foothills Boulevard north into the Sunset area, as well as Fidament Road through the middle of the plan area. The dashed gray line shows the future route for Plaza Parkway that's being planned for. And then the lighter blue lines are just some of the other major backbone roadways planned within the plan area. Within the core of the plan area, these are all arterial roadways. And then as you move further west, because of the residential nature of the plan area, those actually transition to collector streets. Transit. Transit is something that the plan has put a lot of forethought into. It's, it's hard to really see this at this level, but all of the roadways within Plaza Ranch have been designed to accommodate future local bus service. So on the downstream side of every major intersection in here, the bus turnouts have already been pre-designed, so there's space for buses to be accommodated in the future as transit is implemented here. In addition to that, we've noted a conceptual route for bus rapid transit, and that's shown in the pink dashed line. And this route is by no way finalized by PCTPA. This is a long-term vision for how BRT could be accommodated within Plaza Ranch. But the notion here is, is that a portion of Plaza Parkway is used for that BRT route. But ideally, that route would come offline of Plaza Parkway and come within the project, where it provides adjacency to the university, the employment center and campus park, as well as the Town Center, before it links to neighboring jurisdictions in Roseville. In addition to that, a transit master plan will be prepared by the county in the future, and that will guide implementation of transit through this area as, as Plaza Ranch builds out. I'll touch briefly on utilities, because there are some critical infrastructure components here associated with Plaza Ranch. First and foremost is working with PCWA on a 42-inch regional-serving water line that connects to their treatment facility up and, up in Ofer and comes all the way down to West Placer. And that's shown here in this dark blue line. And really, the Plaza Parkway corridor is where that line will, will originate. But that 42-inch water line comes into Plaza Ranch via Campus Park Boulevard. It'll connect to a future 5.1 million gallon water storage tank that serves the region before it exits the plan area and continues west. In addition to that, there's several inner ties to Plaza Parkway system here, along Plaza Parkway corridor, as well as existing facilities that are located in Sunset Boulevard and Nichols. And then also, inner ties are shown along the southern and western edge of the plan area, where Plaza Ranch's backbone water system can tie into the systems located in the city of Roseville. And the purpose for that is to provide redundant reliable supply of water, both for the county as well as for the city. Recycled water is shown here. It's probably a little bit too much detail to go into at this level, but the, the nuts and bolts of it are that, at the southern edge of the plan area, where Wood Creek Oaks, Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard comes into Plaza Ranch from the city of Roseville, Plaza Ranch can tie into existing infrastructure there to provide recycled water for Plaza Ranch and the Sunset area. And that, that pipeline would be extended into the plan area to a storage tank and pumping facility, which would then feed lines throughout the plan area that would provide irrigation water for all non-residential parcels, as well as roadway medians and landscape corridors and parks. And finally, the backbone wastewater infrastructure system here is shown. There's a regional-serving facility located in West Roseville, the Pleasant Grove Wastewater Treatment Plant. This project would be served by that plant. And there are a couple of tie-in points where off-site infrastructure would be constructed to tie into the regional line to that facility. One down here, where Foothills Boulevard exits the plan area, and one here where Fidament Road exits the plan area. Those lines would be extended from existing lines located in the city of Roseville, and those are off-site improvements. All right, well, that's my portion of the presentation. Turn it back over to Crystal to wrap it up.
Thank you, Michelle and Vance. Before we move into kind of talking about the impacts that were identified in the draft environmental document, we just wanted to ask if there were any questions on either the Sunset area plan or the Plaza Ranch specific plan? I think this is a time where we could answer questions that you might have.
Questions?
Yeah, I do. Why are we leaving in the ability to reduce residential to 1,000 feet within the facility since they're not being planned to be that close? It just opens up that someday, somebody may want to come in and do a land use change and get those closer. And if so, what are the things you're looking for in the use permit that would allow them to be closer to that landfill?
Well, we, we have made refinements to the Plaza Ranch project in response to comments that we received. And at this juncture, we have not made those same refinements to the plan in terms of pulling it out to 2,000. It's definitely something that we have talked about. We do know that there is some interest with surrounding properties around the, the landfill that may come in with specific plans in the future and may want to place workforce housing as close as 1,000. And so that was our, our, our goal right now, was to leave it in at 1,000 with approval of a specific plan, master plan, or development agreement. However, I, I would just point out that the, the plan itself, both plans, can be modified and evolve all the way up until adoption. So there's, there's a potential, based on comments that we will continue to receive, that we would make modifications there. In terms of things that we are looking for when, with a use permit, would be, would have to do with like site design, or even the uses that would be proposed. So for example, we might not want to place daycare facilities with outdoor playgrounds, those kinds of things, near, as close as 1,000 feet. We would also be looking for building designs, HVAC systems that, that would help. Commercial uses, trying to maintain uses in that area that would be indoor commercial and not necessarily outdoor commercial. To some extent, I think the market will drive that. But there, we do have actually a mitigation, and I don't have that number offhand, but there is mitigation in the land use chapter of the document that speaks to what those types of site and building design features would be that we'd be looking for.
Another question, looking at the transit, please proceed that. But what about future alternative transit modes, such as driverless cars or pods? Are they being considered in, in this transit?
They are for...
And is there any kind of transfer station to get people, if you get to one location and then move out to other locations?
Well, so I will speak to the Sunset area plan. There are a lot of policies that point to that, those types of new trends that would come online. So we really did try to create policy in the Sunset area plan that is reflective of the fact that there could be changing trends when it comes to transit. With respect to the transit master plan, that has not been prepared, that's something that will come in in the future, and we would be looking towards those Sunset area plan policies when we develop that. I don't know, Michelle, if you or Vance want to speak a little bit more to the transit master plan for the Plaza Ranch piece? But definitely, those types of, those types of new trends in transit would be considered.
Just adding on to what Crystal said, as she mentioned, we'd be, just pretty typical process, requiring a transit master plan to be prepared, which would fine-tune it and, and delve into those details and look at the policies in the area plan as well and cost it out. We've also had discussions with the university about that interaction between the two and providing for the, kind of a transfer center over there as well. But we'd fine-tune that through the master plan.
Any other questions? I have one. Maybe just one. I don't know, we'll see where it goes. The current Sunset industrial plan has considerable amount of property that is owned straight industrial, correct?
Correct.
The proposed plan does not have any straight industrial proposed zoning. It, it goes down to light industrial. Is that...
It's light industrial and industrial mixed use, but we were very careful to carry forward all of the existing uses. It's really a rebranding of the, the title or the name of, of those zone districts. But the, the intent is to recognize the existing industrial uses on those sites, and really to carry forward those, those types of uses in the industrial area.
I guess my, like you said, there's, there's an area in there that is serviced by, by railroad and by spurs and that, that is, I think, ideal for industrial uses. And would, would hate to see that, that those be precluded for being used what they're, for what they're ideally suited for, especially with the limited amount of railroad access property that there is that's suitable for those type of uses.
We, we agree, and that is exactly why we're carrying forward those uses, because of that proximity to rail.
And, and I mean not, you're carrying forward the actual uses and not users?
Allowed, users and allowed uses, yes.
Okay. I think that takes care of my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions on the plan before we dive into...
And maybe let me stop and take a quick check with our reporter. Are you holding out all right? Or should we take a break for you now before we dive into something new? All right.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, that's right. So I first wanted these, this slide and the next slide are just a list of the proposed entitlements. So you will find this in the project description of the EIR. They really illustrate the actions that our board will be asked to take, and your commission will be asked to make a recommendation to the board. And so these have been analyzed. There are a lot of them. They have been analyzed in the EIR. I do want to point out this, you know, we're talking about planning an area of approximately 8,500 acres, so with two big projects, so a lot of actions would be asked for the board's consideration at the end. So for the notice of preparation, again, this process, the environmental process started way back in 2016. They end there. The notice of preparation was circulated from November 3rd to December 12th in 2016. We did hold two public scoping meetings at that time. No initial study was prepared with NOP, as we assumed and knew that there would be impacts that would be significant or potentially significant. And so we just analyzed the full resource, resources on site. These are, this is a list, actually, before I get to that, I just want to talk to, about kind of the timeline of the environmental document. So after the scoping meetings, we did prepare this, the technical studies that I had talked about, a lot of coordination with our neighboring jurisdictions on preparation of those studies. And again, we, we prepared two different administrative draft EIRs and also worked with the first one, coordinated with those agencies on preparation of the first one. And then again, the preliminary public review draft of the plans came out last year. The idea was to get some input and make some changes. We actually did make a lot of changes to transit policy in the Sunset area plan. And then, excuse me, as Vance had noted, we made some modifications or refinements to the Plaza Ranch specific plan, too, in response to those comments. And then finally, we released the draft document this December. So this list here are outlines the areas of controversy that were noted in the NOP. So the DEIR does focus on, on these items here. I am not going to, to list, to, to read all these. But really, the, the environmental impact hits on all of these areas. It is a long list. And then this is just a list of the impact analysis. Again, I want to point out a couple of things, it's sort of organization of the EIR. We analyze the Sunset area plan at a programmatic level, Plaza Ranch at a project level, real specific, because as Vance highlighted, it gets down into, you know, it is a project being proposed, so it gets into the specifics, with exception to that Sac State site. The intent there is that they would, they would tear off of this document for their own master planning. And then I wanted to point out that there are a lot of off-site improvements associated with this project that are actually outside of the county's jurisdiction. So a lot of them are located in the city of Roseville, or they would fall under the jurisdiction of, for example, the Plaza, PCTPA, with the Parkway improvement, that kind of thing. So for those, what we have done is we have identified them as other supporting infrastructure. So if you did read the EIR, you will find that in each resource section, we would break down the impact and a conclusion for what we call other supporting infrastructure. And so that could be what you, you would find in the document, is there's a lot of discussion about the Pleasant Grove Retention Facility. This is a facility located in the city of Roseville boundary. Again, it's, it's off, off-site and not within the Plaza County's boundary. So that's really how the document is, is organized. So really quick, I'm not going to touch base too much on the no impact or less-than-significant impact. So this was for the Sunset area plan and the Plaza Ranch specific plan, not the off-site other supporting infrastructure, like I just mentioned. So I'm just, they're listed here, but there are impacts associated with these resource chapters that were found to be, either have no impact or less-than-significant impacts with mitigation. Same thing for the other supporting infrastructure. So I'm not going to get into those, but what I am going to touch on are the significant unavoidable. And I just want to point out that, again, large, you know, we have about 8,500 acres of land here that we have analyzed. And so there, you, you probably found that there were a lot of significant unavoidablels. However, I want to provide a little clarity about them. We have, I sort of broke them out into three different categories. One, the, there are impacts that can be mitigated that are outside of the county's jurisdiction. So for those off-site improvement projects, there were a lot of significant unavoidable impacts that actually can be mitigated to a less-than-significant level, but because they're outside of the county's jurisdiction, we do not have control over the implementation or timing of those mitigation. So they have been deemed significant unavoidable. And so I'm going to, I'll talk about what those are, and then I'll dive into the significant unavoidable that are for the Sunset area plan and Plaza Ranch. And then I'll talk about the cumulative, cumulative impacts. So for the significant unavoidable, these are impacts that can be mitigated to less-than-significant with mitigation. But again, they're outside of our control, because they're located off-site and outside of the Plaza County boundary, are related to aesthetics, biology, archaeological, historical, and tribal cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards, hydrology and water quality, transportation, circulation, and utilities. So I'm not going to dive into each of these, but I, I will touch on a couple of them. So a lot of these impacts here in the bio are related to impacts that are associated with the Pleasant Grove Retention Facility, which is located to the west of the project site in the city of Roseville. All of them, except for impact 4.4-8, is related to that site. And the, I want to point out that there is mitigation, standard mitigation practice that the county would implement ourselves, if it was within the county, that would mitigate these impacts to less-than-significant. Again, we, we drew a conclusion, a very conservative, we took a conservative approach, and we do this with all of our projects, so you've probably heard this before, where if the impact and mitigation is outside of the county's authority to implement, then we call it significant unavoidable. So that is what you see there. Impact 4.4-8, I did want to talk a little bit about. This is interference with, substantially with wildlife movement. So this has to do with wildlife crossing really over the Plaza Parkway. So we've got, you know, a, a very large circulation system going through the, the area, the planned area. And so we looked at wildlife movement throughout the plan area and found that there is an impact there. We do have mitigation that would minimize this to less-than-significant with maintenance of interconnected natural areas that would really protect biodiversity and sustain ecosystems in the plan area. However, that mitigation would involve coordination with the Placard County Transportation Planning Agency, because they do have jurisdiction over that, over that Parkway. And then the feasibility of incorporating those movement features into the design is uncertain, so this impact has been deemed significant unavoidable. And then touching on aesthetics here, the same thing, aesthetic, all of these that you see listed here, again, there are very standard mitigation that is available, that the county would, would utilize and implement if it was within the, the county's jurisdiction, but it's not. And so we have deemed these significant unavoidable. And I'm not going to, for the sake of time, I'm, I'm not going to touch on those in detail. And then we get to hazards, hydrology, and water quality, and utilities. And I do want to touch on a couple of these. In the hazard section, exposure to hazardous materials during construction, interference with implementing an emergency response plan, and vector-related health hazards, again, very, very standard mitigation. very, very standard mitigation is available for those. Those would not have been deemed significant unavoidable if they were in the county's jurisdiction. For hydrology and water quality, I did want to touch on the two, 4.9-3 and 4.9-4, same thing, very, very standard mitigation that you would see the county implement if it was in our jurisdiction, but 4.9-1 has to do with stormwater runoff, and I kind of want to talk a little bit about that. So the analysis includes option for, two options for mitigation of stormwater runoff. And I'll point out that in the planned area, we have a watershed break through the middle of the Sunset plan area. The waters to the north would flow into the Auburn Ravine and Orchard Creek watersheds, and the waters to the south would flow into the Pleasant Grove Creek watershed. So for Plaza Ranch, all of Plaza Ranch would flow into the Pleasant Grove. We have had a lot of coordination, a lot of meetings with city of Roseville about potentially utilizing that facility when it comes online for mitigating impacts for the, the watershed to the south. So all those flows that would run into the Pleasant Grove Creek. However, that facility, it has been approved, it's a, it has gone through like a programmatic level environmental analysis, but it has not been constructed, and it has not gone, gone through any project-level SEQA analysis to date. But we have been engaged with them, the intent is that the flows from Plaza Ranch, so we did that project-level analysis to show that, that facility, if it was expanded, and that is analyzed in our document, that, that facility could handle the flows from the Plaza Ranch project and the Sunset, the southern portion of the Sunset. However, I'll point out that what we did is provided for two different options in the mitigation. One is to either go, like in the north, it would go to the Lakeview, what we call the Lakeview Farms, which is in Lincoln, that site actually has, is under design and construction to, to accept stormwater flows. And then in the Plaza Ranch and the southern portion of Sunset, it would be to the Pleasant Grove site or retention onsite, and so currently, what we do out there is actually retention onsite. So if somebody comes in, in the, in the Sunset area, we do require them to retain their stormwater flows onsite today. So there would, there's, mitigation is set up to be an either/or. So when those facilities came online, or a project came in in the Sunset area, for example, that's in the north, we would require them to, to mitigate either retain onsite or to work with the Lakeville Farms facility. So the reason this is deemed significant unavoidable is because those two facilities, again, are outside of our jurisdiction. So while we have identified them as areas to mitigate stormwater flows, it's, it's really out of our control in terms of securing agreements to do that. And then, let's see. So for the utilities, I also wanted to touch on the utilities here, this is impact 415-2, this has to do with increased demand for water supply convenience and water treatment services. I do want to point out, this is not necessarily about water supply, but really the conveyance. And so the existing, there's a, this PCWA, PCWA, excuse me, has an existing foothill water treatment plant and Sunset water treatment plant that don't, that do not have sufficient capacity to accommodate water treatment needs for build-out of, of the Sunset area and the Plaza Ranch specific plan. However, there is anticipated construction of the OFER water treatment plant that would have that capacity, it's just, it is not under construction to date. It is planned with PCWA and would certainly accommodate it, it's just not online to date. And so this has also been deemed significant unavoidable, because again, it's, the construction of that facility is outside of the county's jurisdiction. And then for traffic, I want to, there's a number of impacts here, same thing, they are impacts to areas outside of our jurisdiction, excuse me, where mitigation is available. I am going to kind of touch on these. The first is an impact to signalize intersections, intersection operations in the city of Roseville. This would increase, the study showed it would increase delay and degradations in level of service. The, the draft environmental document does identify mitigation that would require projects to pay traffic impact fees for their fair share of contributions to fund improvements to those intersections. However, again, while the mitigation is there, and it's likely that the city of Roseville would certainly implement that mitigation, it is outside of our control, and so it's been deemed significant unavoidable. Same thing with the, the next one is unsignalized intersection operations with the city of Roseville. This is, is the same, there was an impact found here, there is a mitigation, again, identified to pay traffic fees to fund fair share contributions. But again, because these improvements would require approval and implementation by the city of Roseville, they're not within our jurisdiction. And then you'll see the same thing here with the city of Rockland. The impact associated here results in degradation to level of service and increases delay at intersections that are already operating at an unacceptable level, so it's deemed significant. Again, the mitigation here is the same, paying traffic fees towards fair share contribution to fund improvements that would reduce these impacts, again, outside of our jurisdiction. City of Lincoln is a little bit different. The impact to city Lincoln is really significant unavoidable in the short term, because the Phase 1 of Plaza Parkway would actually help with this impact, so it's considered significant in the short term until that, that Phase 1 of Plaza Parkway came online. But again, any improvements would be outside of the, the county's jurisdiction. And then for Sutter County, the same thing here, I, I want to point out that the improvements here, there are, there's mitigation monies that have already been accepted from other development in the region, and improvements would be needed to Baseline Road and Pleasant Grove Road North, and Baseline Road and Pleasant Grove Road South, and so those would be actually, those, those improvements are funded by traffic fees that have already been provided by future development within the Dry Creek Benefit District of Plaza County, it's in the CIP. So those would mitigate impacts in that area, but again, it's outside of our control in terms of the implementation and timing of those improvements. And then for Caltrans, here you'll see an impact 414-9, this would be an impact to the intersections under the Caltrans jurisdiction, and same thing, we do have mitigation that's identified in the draft that you'll see for payment of traffic impact fees for fair share contribution, it would go towards improvements of highway ramp, terminal intersections, but there again, it's, we cannot ensure the implementation of that, of those improvements. And that would be, those intersections would actually be, it could be implemented definitely by Caltrans, but also the city of Roseville or city of Rockland would be involved in that too. And then we have impact of freeway operations that you'll see here at the bottom, 4.1410, and this has to do with the freeway operations on 80 and 65. I'll point out that phases 1E through 1C of the Interstate 80, State Route 65 interchange improvements, and the Phase, Phase 1 and Phase 2 of State Route 65 widening project would help to mitigate this impact. And the South Plaza Regional Transportation Authority Fee Program would address some of those, however, full funding for those improvements is not available. So because we do have mitigation, again, that would require a fair share contribution towards mitigation or, or towards this impact, however, because there's only really partial funding that has been identified for these improvements, again, the State Route 65 widening project and the Interstate 80-65 interchange improvements, this has been deemed significant and unavoidable. And again, it's, the, the authority for us to implement this is outside of our control. Okay, so what I'm going to do now is turn to the significant unavoidable impacts that are associated with the Sunset area plan and Plaza Ranch, and in some cases, the other supporting infrastructure as well. And that's a list of the resource chapters that I'm going to touch on. So the first is the aesthetics. Again, what I want to point out is that under SEQA, we do analyze the project based on what we call baseline, that's existing conditions, so while a lot of this land out here is zoned for industrial and has existing development capacity, a lot of it is undeveloped land. And so when I touch on these two impacts, I just want to point out that you think about it in, in that context, that we're talking about land that is currently undeveloped, even though it has existing development capacity. So for aesthetics, we found that there was an impact to substantial degradation of the existing visual character or quality of site, and its surrounding after build-out. So within the Sunset and the Plaza Ranch, we found that there would be a change in visual character that would be substantial in areas that are currently undeveloped, and where new substantially taller development would be proposed and allowed with approvals of, of these plans. So in views where project development would be placed adjacent to preserve and open space, we also found some impact there. So we've got all those natural preserves to the north of Sunset, and so it's that abrupt transition between substantially taller development and those existing open spaces, there would be an impact. So the, the impact is significant and unavoidable, I point out that we do have design guidelines prepared for Sunset and Plaza Ranch that would certainly facilitate a cohesive aesthetic appearance to that develop and landscaping throughout the project area. However, there are no additional feasible mitigation measures that would reduce this impact to a less than, less than significant level. And then for, we also have this impact 4.1-4, is it related to light and glare? So the impact is a new source of substantial light or glare that would adversely affect day or nighttime views in the area after build-out. We do have general plan policies, Sunset area plan policies, and Plaza Ranch policies and design guidelines that would emphasize the use of less reflective surfaces and orientation of the buildings, as well as other lighting requirements to try to limit these impacts. However, it's, it's really the, the quality, excuse me, not quality, the substantial source of light across the entire project area, that is the impact here. So there's really no feasible mitigation beyond those policies and those guidelines to lessen this impact. The next one is related to ag resources, and this has to do, it's impact 4.2-1, this is a conversion of farmland to a non-agricultural use. This applies to the Sunset area, Plaza Ranch, and the other supporting infrastructure, namely that Pleasant Grove retention facility. So the DEIR found that implementation of the project would require conversion of farmland, we have prime farmland, farmland of statewide or local importance, and unique farmland designations by the states, by the state. So it would convert it to a non-agricultural use, again, even though some of those areas may have existing development rights, you're talking about land that is designated by the state as, as farmland. So it would result in conversion of up to 7,295 acres of farmland altogether, and although we do have mitigation that would require projects to mitigate for that loss at a 1: 1 ratio, it would really only partially offset the direct conversion of, of farmland. And so this has been found to be significant and unavoidable. Okay, moving on to air quality, there are a few impacts here. The first is construction emissions of criteria air pollutant and ozone precursors. And so the DEIR found that construction emissions associated with the project, again, this would be the Sunset area plan, Plaza Ranch, and the off-site, it would exceed applicable thresholds, and there, and thus contribute to the existing non-attainment status of the Sacramento Valley air basin with respect to, to these emissions. And so for that, we do have mitigation that is identified in the EIR, pointed out in your staff report there, that would require implementation of PC, APCDs, the air districts' recommended, construction mitigation measures, so these would be dust control plans and things like that. However, because of the scale and extent of this project, and really the timing that this would build out over a number of years, this impact was found significant and unavoidable. The next is the long-term operational emissions of criteria air pollutants and ozone precursors. This found that operations of the project after full build-out would generate emissions which are precursors to ozone, and would exceed the applicable mass emission thresholds recommended by the air district. So the long-term emissions produced by this project would conflict with their, their air quality planning efforts and contribute substantially to the non-attainment status of the air basin. So this is significant. Again, we do have a lot of mitigation identified for this, which would require future development projects to demonstrate reduction of area source emissions, mobile source emissions, PM10 emissions, as well as purchasing offsets through the air district's off-site mitigation fee program. And while that mitigation would reduce these impacts, it cannot be reduced, it has found that could not be reduced to less than significant. And then the next, impact 4.3-5 has to do with sensitive receptors to toxic air contaminants, this applies to both Sunset and Plaza Ranch, not the off-site infrastructure. And this found that the development of new residential land uses or other sensitive receptors within 500 feet of State Route 65, which is considered a high-volume roadway, traffic volumes that exceed 100,000 trips per day, which is a setback distance recommended by the California Air Resources Board. And then also, development of land uses with, that would be, excuse me, development of land uses under the project with truck loading near residences, schools, or child daycares could result in exposure of these sensitive receptors to contaminants. So we do have mitigation that requires incorporation of site and building design features for future development to reduce this impact, however, this impact was found to not, was not reduced to less than significant levels. And then, oops, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed one here. The one at the bottom here, impact 4.3-6, create objectional, objectionable odors affecting a substantial number of people, this applies to the Sunset and Plaza Ranch, and has to do with the change in the buffer policy. So, and, and really, it has to do with increased odors at the landfill that are a result of waste generated from this project, so that's specifically what the analysis is doing here, is demonstrating. So the project would generate waste that would be received, processed, disposed of at the Plaza County Western Regional Sanitary Landfill, thereby contributing to sources of the landfill odor over time. I'll lose my voice here. As odor generation is generally proportionate to the volume of the waste generated and processed, the DEIR found that the project would at its peak represent about 16% of the odor currently generated at the landfill site. And at the time that the landfill closes in 2058, it would represent approximately 8% of the odor emissions, so it goes down over time. And I do have a specialist here to answer questions, if you have any, about the odors. My, my first dive into odor analysis, but we do have somebody here if you have questions about this. So while the project would not necessarily, it doesn't create objectional odors, it would establish residential and other land uses and bring people closer to the odor source, the landfill, and that's as a result of that change in the buffer. So based on some existing data that you'll see in the DEIR, namely, there's an exhibit, it's 4.3-1, that shows the location of existing complaint odor complaints that the landfill gets on an annual basis. Based on that data, we found that residents beyond one mile are being impacted to date. And then there was also some modeling and analysis of post-project landfill odor. So we found that new, new residents in the Sunset and Plaza Ranch area would be exposed to objectional odors, and may complain about those odors. So the overall number of complaints lodged about odors would potentially increase. As outlined in the environmental document, the Western Plaza Waste Management Authority is engaged with the community, they continually engage with the community on odor management. They are also assessing the viability of odor reducing, odor reducing approaches through pilot studies, they have pilot studies going on there, and actively planning facility and operational improvements as part of what they call a Renewable Plaza Waste Action Plan. And, and the plan is to address regional growth, regulatory requirements, and other goals and objectives, including odor controls is a piece of, piece of that. However, I want to point out that these measures, again, are beyond the control of Plaza County, and really, the nature, degree and effectiveness of future odor control measures are unknown at this time, their planning is still underway. So this has been deemed significant and unavoidable. Okay, moving on to biological resources. These two here that you see, I just want to point out that with implementation, they are identified as significant and unavoidable. We have two different approaches for mitigation where they could approach through the Placer County Conservation Plan if it were, when and if it's approved. And if it was approved, these two mitigation that you see, or excuse me, these two impacts that you see here could be mitigated to less than significant because of the Placer County Conservation Strategies approach of large managed reserve system that would really protect and conserve land, rather than a project-by-project kind of fragmented and isolated approach to mitigation. So you will see impacts here associated with the Sunset and Placeta Ranch and other supporting infrastructure related to the loss and degradation of state or federally protected waters, as well as vernapool and Western Spadefoot habitat. But again, I'll just point out that they are deemed significant and unavoidable. The intent, though, is for projects to mitigate through the Placer County Conservation Plan. And then for greenhouse gas emissions, I want to touch on that. There is an impact associated with operational greenhouse gas emissions. It applies to just the Sunset area plan and Placeta Ranch, not the off-site infrastructure. So operation of land uses developed under these plans is estimated to generate about 380,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent at build-out. That's for the Sunset, excuse me, for Placeta Ranch, it would be about 200,000. These levels exceed the air district's threshold and have a potential to result in considerable contribution to emissions and climate change and would conflict with state greenhouse gas reduction targets that have been set. So we do have mitigation identified for this impact, which would require all feasible site and building design features for new development, which could offset a single year of operation-related greenhouse gas emissions and reduce those impacts related to operational greenhouse gas emissions. However, that mitigation alone would not reduce the emissions for the life of the project below those thresholds. Okay, moving on to land use. There is an impact related to consistency and compatibility with the Western Regional Landfill. And so this is really a land use compatibility impact, similar to the one I just described about air quality, except that this is really about, again, compatibility of residential uses up next to a landfill site. So again, the project does propose a reduction in that buffer, and it would, which would result in putting residential uses closer to the facility than would otherwise be today under the current general plan. And again, based upon that data, we found that it's quite possible that odor complaints would rise. And because of that, it could create pressure on the Western Placer Waste Management Authority to implement additional odor control and reduction measures at that site. And that absent those odor sources, it could interfere with the ability of the landfill to expand or modify their operations. So we have identified some mitigation. Again, this is the one I talked about earlier about site and building design that we would require when projects came in through a specific plan, a master plan, or development agreement. However, we did find that it could not be mitigated to less than significant. So while that mitigation would not eliminate, it doesn't eliminate the source of the odor or any of the factors that contribute to the intensification or range of perception of odor. So the wind, temperature, that kind of thing, we can't control that. So this has been found to be significant and unavoidable. Let's see, construction noise, where are we at here? So next has to do with noise, and the first is exposure of existing sensitive receptors to construction noise.
Krista, I'm sorry, I'm just worried about our reporter here. Maybe if we, if we could, would this be an appropriate time to take a few minutes here and let her do this? How much, we're...
I am just about done with the significant unavoidable's before I go into the cumulative impacts. So there's more to come.
Okay.
But...
So maybe if we could, let's...
You want me to get through these? I have like three left, and then I'd take a break with that?
Maybe we, I mean, we're past kind of the hour and a half threshold I was given. If you don't mind, and...
Okay.
The commissioners don't mind, we'll take a break here and let you do this. And maybe back in Penn Tell or something like that?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve wants me to just spread.
Okay.
But it's a lot.
It's a lot.
I told you, it's like...
Folks are either appreciating it, so they don't have to read the document.
Well, I mean, that's the whole purpose of it. Well, I'm in a... Yeah, all the... I'm so sorry. Really? Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I've learned to be really, I try to like, have to get through a lot of material. Well, I... Um, well...
All right, if we could please be seated and we'll turn Crystal Lewis again.
Hi, thank you.
And let you get wrapped up here.
Okay, I'm going to, I know it's taking a long time, and I'm sorry, there's a lot of material, but out of respect of folks' time, all of this information, I will point out, is in the staff report. So what I'm going to do is just read, just the impact statement, and just that we have a couple more to cover here, same with cumulative, and then I'll touch on alternatives, because I think that is important to speak to, and then I'll close.
Thank you.
So, again, these two impacts here, one to land use that I just spoke about previously, and then two related to noise that have been deemed significant unavoidable exposure to existing sensitive receptors to construction noise, and then exposing new and existing sensitive receptors to project-generated transportation noise. Again, going from an undeveloped site to developed, you get that transportation noise impacts. And then two, one related to population employment and housing, just putting, you know, new growth in the area, and then one related to transportation circulation, the vehicle miles traveled impact. Cumulative impacts, there are two aesthetics, I'm not going to touch on these, because they are really the same as the ones I touched on earlier under significant unavoidable. Air quality, the same, as I had touched on earlier, they are also deemed cumulative. And then we get into bio, the same thing here, except I will point out this, as I mentioned earlier, with approval or adoption of the plastic kind of conservation plan, these impacts can be reduced to less than significant, but they are considered cumulative in this document. And then down here, same thing with the archaeological, historical, and tribal, there was an impact found there. Noise, the two noise impacts that I just talked about, again, those are considered cumulative. Population employment and housing, again, new growth in the area. And then a number of transportation circulation impacts, and again, those are related to the impacts that I described within the neighboring jurisdictions. Okay, so that brings me to the alternatives, I want to touch on those. There are five alternatives talked about in the document. Alternative one is a no project, let's flip forward here, no project, so that would be just that, no project, so it would assume the project is not approved, and development would occur consistent with the 1997 adopted plan. Alternative two is what we call a reduced scale, this is in response to the significant impacts associated with aesthetics, and it's that transition, the taller buildings in an undeveloped area that I had talked about earlier. So this would result, would reduce the overall scale of development by reducing the allowed maximum building heights. The alternative would also help to transition between developed areas and undeveloped preserve areas. And then, under this alternative, the SAC State Plaster Center would not change. For alternative three, this is what we call a reduced footprint, reduced development potential, and so, am I at, yes, three, sorry. So for three, and this is in response to impacts related to the Vernal Pool Recovery Core area, so again, what you would be doing here with this, this alternative is to try to avoid those, those areas. So the project would, again, result in preservation of about, under this alternative, 29 percent, or 2,140 square feet of that core area of Vernal Pool Habitat. This alternative is designed to address the significant project impact by increasing the amount of core area preserve to 3,700, 3,600 acres. This alternative would reduce the area subject to development as compared to the project, and reduce the overall development potential of the project. It also addresses some other impacts associated with the project, including traffic, the VMT, greenhouse gas emissions, air quality, and noise. And then, under this alternative, the SAC State Plaster Center would not change. Alternative four is similar, it's a reduced footprint, similar, similar development potential, so it's, it's, it's much like alternative three, it would achieve a smaller reduction in the project-related impact to the core Vernal Pool Habitat, it would maintain a similar development pattern to what is proposed, and it has almost 1,500 fewer developable acres. It results in a more compact development with a shift from lower-density residential to higher-density residential, so that's how you would, would achieve this. And then the non-residential structures would be slightly taller, and may include parking structures. And then, under this, the, again, the SAC State Plaster Center would not change. Alternative five is in response to impacts related to VMT. So in VMT, one of the larger sort of components of the impact had to do with the entertainment mixed-use area and its draw for, it's a, it's considered a regional draw, so there's a lot of VMT associated with that land use, and so, under this alternative, it would aim to achieve a reduction of VMT by eliminating the non-residential uses from that designation. It results in a 20 percent reduction in non-residential floor area in the net Sunset Area Plan area, and then the Placerville Ranch specific plan under this alternative would not change. So for the environmentally superior alternative, we are required to identify one, and the identified environmentally superior alternative is implementing the no project. So the benefit, or the reduced impacts would be related to air quality, land use compatibility, and population employment growth. It is important to note that, under this alternative, you would, it would result in more severe significant biological resource impacts associated with the Vernal Pool Habitat, and I also want to point out that this would not meet the primary objectives of the Sunset Area Plan, it would not, or the Placerville Ranch specific plan objectives. So, I am at the end. So, thank you for bearing with me.
Regarding the significant unavoidable because of other agencies, is the county pursuing getting agreements with those other agencies, or at least some, so that when you come back with the final environmental impact report, those are mitigated?
Yes, I would say, we have met with, well, I could speak to, we've had a lot of meetings with the City of Roseville, because a lot of those impacts are associated with the City of Roseville, so we've met with them on a continual basis on the Pleasant Grove retention facility, as well as the traffic impacts. Those discussions are ongoing, there are no agreements in place to date. I think a lot of the concerns that you may hear today, or that you have, have already heard, may be dealt with in the development agreement for the Placerville Ranch project, or any, any future development agreement that comes in for the project.
When do we expect the development agreement?
The development agreement will come before your commission, when it, when we're ready for deliberations on the project. So it's, it's under, it's, it's being drafted, it's actually in administrative draft right now, and so, we will be, begin, again, to dive into some negotiations with outside jurisdictions, but the intent is that that document would be prepared for your commission's consideration.
Kind of in relationship to that, Crystal, you mentioned collecting fair share, and that's pending with the development agreement, or is this something that's already planned?
Listen, I may, I may have to ask, I believe so, that that'll be included in that, but in terms of the mechanism there for the fair share contribution, the mitigation is identified, and I don't know if, is Rich in the room? Do you want, sorry, Rich. I'm going to have Rich kind of just talk a little bit about, because there were a lot of impacts related to traffic and the fair share contributions, so I'll let Rich kind of touch on that.
So to answer that directly, you don't get down to the specificity of it, we're using the same mitigation strategy that's been used for the other specific plans in the region, it does say there's a fair share contribution, and we start those negotiations after approval of the plan, that's what's in the current mitigation measure. We have met with the City of Roseville and talked through a lot of the issues that are going on, and one of the things I would like to point out, that a lot of those impacts themselves are really the existing plus project impacts, so if you take this entire plan, drop it in today without any improvements in place, once the cumulative setting gets in place and the improvements are assumed that are funded, those impacts come down to a significantly less level. But, but the idea would be to negotiate that out after the approval of the documents, you wouldn't have the specificity, but there would be details in the DA on how, how that would occur, if that helps.
Rich, full, full name for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, I'm Richard Moorhead with Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Any other question? Crystal, thank you.
I was going to say, I do have some comments related to landfill and plaster ring. Questions and comments, but maybe, there's people have been very patient in this room waiting to speak on this, so maybe I'll just wait until after the public comment.
Make sure you get the time, thank you. Okay, I guess we're getting ready for public comment. I guess, I would, I've had it expressed to me that there's been concern over the time and available, as far as for people who are waiting to speak that might not be able to to wait this out, would like to remind you that you can submit your comments in writing, you will have no time restraints on you, that you will for, for public comment, so you can maybe elaborate a little more, if you'd like to submit those in writing versus getting up to speak or waiting around to speak, that option is certainly available to you. Would like to remind everybody that these comments are directed to the environmental document only, not to the merits of the project. We are going to have the timer going, we're going to limit this to three minutes per individual. If you're representing a group, please identify the group you, you represent, and you will be given up to five minutes. There is a sign-up sheet, and we'll be calling names off of that. With that being said, Karen, or who's got the sheet?
Chairman, I have, I have the comment sign-up sheet in front of me, and I have 13 people signed up right now, so what I'll do, I'll call three names off at a time, so you'll know what order you're in, and we can get started whenever the commission is ready.
Please.
Okay, first names, and please forgive me if I mispronounce any of your names, Ellen Garber, Sue Ingle, Robin Burrell.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and good doon, commissioners. My name is Ellen Garber with the Law Firm of Shute, Mahalia, and Weinberger, and I'm speaking on behalf of the City of Roseville. Before we begin our comments on the EIR, I would just like to emphasize the city's complete support of the development of the university in this area, as well as the concept of the proposed project. The proposed project shares a three-mile common border with the northern boundary of the City of Roseville. In addition, key roadway connections either exist, Vitamont Road, or are planned to connect to the project areas such as Wood Creek's Oak Boulevard and Foothills Boulevard. Given this interface, this project will have disproportionate impacts on the City of Roseville and its residents and businesses. Therefore, it is imperative that the city and the county work together to reduce impacts as much as possible. Because the city cares about the effects of the project, we have reviewed the EIR and will be submitting detailed comments, but would like to take this opportunity to highlight the city's major concerns. First, the city is concerned that the analysis of the Sunset Area Plan is at a program level and is also incomplete, which could understate the impacts of the project. The proposed build-out period for the area plan is 80 years, but the analysis ends in the year 2036. Even though specific land uses will become part of the general plan if approved, and the property will be zoned consistent with those land uses, therefore, the land use program that's built out is known at this time, and is reasonably foreseeable, and has not been analyzed in the EIR. Another major concern, area of concern, is the lack of fully enforceable mitigation measures, as required by SEQA, to mitigate the impacts of the project in Roseville on traffic and on public services such as police, fire, parks, and library services. The EIR fails to disclose the potential for public services such as the city fire department, law enforcement, parks, and libraries, that will increasingly provide services to new development, resulting in decreasing service levels and substantial physical deterioration of parks and recreation facilities, necessitating construction of new facilities without assured mitigation from the plan areas. However, the mitigation measures consist of vague statements that the city will negotiate in good faith to achieve a commitment to collect fair share fees with no mechanism in place, no development trigger, and no promise to use the fees for the improvements needed to offset impacts in Roseville. The city is also concerned about the failure to mitigate for the county's proposal to amend the general plan and significantly reduce the land use buffers around the landfill. This change will almost certainly create significant odor impacts to nearby populations, and will create incompatible land uses due to the county's decision to remove the buffer zone land use and replace it with residential and other uses. These impacts will require the joint powers authority, of which the city is a member, to implement additional mitigation in order to avoid odor complaints and regulatory enforcement actions. However, the EIR does not acknowledge the need for mitigation or require the county and/or development in the plan areas to pay for their fair share of the improvements. For drainage impacts, the EIR relies on construction of the city's planned Pleasant Grove detention basin. There is no mitigation requiring the plan areas to fund and maintain future improvements that are directly related to the use of this facility to provide capacity for the project. This analysis needs to be revised and recirculated to acknowledge the potential impacts and provide for enforceable mitigation measures. Traffic impacts are also of major concern to the city. The EIR concludes that the project will reduce the number of intersections in Roseville operating at Level of Service C from 84 percent to 68 percent, which is inconsistent with the city's general plan policies. In addition, unsignalized intersections will be reduced from Level of Service C to an unacceptable Level of Service F. An example of a significant impact that will not be mitigated is that the development of Foothills Boulevard has been identified as a traffic improvement necessary to support the project. The EIR states that a six-lane facility will ultimately be required. Do I have enough for two minutes?
I think you've actually had, had more than the five to start with, we...
Did I? Okay.
I cracked that up a little when you were in mid-speech.
In summary, in the spirit of cooperation forged by, between the city and the county since 1994, the city requests the county to revise the EIR based on these comments and on the city's written comments, we would request the planning commission direct staff to work with the City of Roseville to develop appropriate and adequate mitigation to address all offsite impacts within the City of Roseville. Thank you. Members of the city staff are here and available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind those speaking, when the yellow light comes on, that's your, your, your one-minute warning and time to kind of get your thoughts wrapped up and wound up.
Okay.
So you don't get caught off-guard by the, the red light and the beep.
All right, I'm representing a large group.
And, and what group is that?
And that group is the Placer County Solid Waste Task Force. My name is Sue Ingle, and I'm representing the Solid Waste Task Force today, I'm going to refer to them as the Task Force because it's such a long-term. Who's on this task force? We have representatives from the cities of Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, Auburn, and Colfax, the Tonalumis, two waste haulers, the landfill and MRF operator, County Board of Supervisors, County Planning Commission, Environmental Group, and the general public. The Task Force was established by the Boards of Supervisors in 1990 to advise the Board on matters related to solid waste, I'm here on their behalf. The Task Force has significant concerns with the proposed modification to the current landfill buffer zone of one mile down to 1,000 or 2,000 feet, and urges the county to maintain and enforce existing general plan policy 4.11. As noted on 4.10-15, the EIR acknowledges that the Placer Air Pollution Control District and the SEQA handbook recommends a screening distance for sanitary landfills of one mile. Chapter 4.3, the Air Quality Section, pages 4.3-6 and 8, Odors. The Task Force supports the EIR's acknowledgement of the ways that odors can affect people, can cause psychological issues, anger, irritation, anxiety, to physiological, of respiratory effects, nausea, vomiting, and headaches. By bringing incompatible land uses in close proximity to the landfill, this will expose people to these conditions as part of their everyday life. Odor complaints, Table 4.3-3 in the EIR lists the number of current complaints from 2012 to 2017. The EIR does not address how additional complaints would be handled, we think this is insufficient. Chapter 4.10, Land Use. The Task Force is supportive of the findings under Impact 4.10-2, that bringing residential development closer to the landfill would... development closer to the landfill would result in incompatible use with the landfill. Incompatible land uses could cause conflicts with the current landfill operation. The inherent odors from the landfill, MRF, and composting facility could adversely affect the public's ability to participate in outside activities. Mitigation Measure 410-2 on the deed notification. The Task Force appreciates inclusion of such a mitigation measure in the deed notification, but the language proposed does not preclude a property owner from seeking legal restitution due to odors. The Task Force recommends that, to the extent legally permissible, the deed be modified particularly for parcels within the one-mile buffer to the landfill and include language that would prohibit a property owner from litigating against the landfill based on odors. The Task Force appreciates all the proposed mitigation measures, but we would like to point out that current technologies do not exist to eliminate or fully mitigate landfill odors inside or out. So imagine buying a new house in Placer Ranch where you can't open your windows due to offensive odors. Utilities, Chapter 4.15, the Impact 4.15-11, the EIR states that most likely the odor complaints would not shut down the landfill and makes it a less than significant finding. But the Task Force disagrees and feels that these impacts are these are potential impacts and quite real and significant. There have been lawsuits in the past and regulatory actions taken against solid waste facilities such as Newby Island in San Jose and Sunshine Canyon in Southern California. Right now, the landfill is looking at expansion and say if this type of development was allowed next to the landfill, it could potentially shut the landfill down. We would like to have these up, we appreciate to have this opportunity to comment on the draft EIR, and we trust that these comments will be given, that you'll give direction to the county staff and to the county board of supervisors. Thank you for the ability to comment.
Thank you.
Hey, Robin Burrell is next, and then the next three, Scott Johnson, William Walters, or Waters, and Jean Piety.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Robin Burrell. I'm an attorney with Churchwell White in Sacramento. We here, speaking on behalf of Western Placer Waste Management Authority. It's been a it's been a long morning. I'll keep my my comments brief. First, I wanted to acknowledge all the work that's gone into all these documents. I think there's, I want to acknowledge that, you know, it's been a long process. There's been three administrative drafts to the EIR. I want to acknowledge some of the changes that have been made regarding Placer Ranch and changes to the land uses to try to accommodate proximity to to the landfill site. But I think that, you know, generally with regard to the Sunset Area Plan, the authority is generally supportive. They've been a stakeholder throughout this whole process. Obviously, the the major concern we have is with regard to the buffer and making sure that if this project is going to get approved, it needs to be done the right way, implementing all the feasible mitigation that's possible to make sure that we have reduction in future land use conflicts as this area builds out. So just wanted to give you an update that I've been brought on to help the authority review the project. We've brought on some of our own experts who are looking at some of the odor analysis. We'll be we'll be submitting our own comment letter, evaluating the existing reports, and to sort of build on the collaborative dialogue that's been going on already to make sure that we can help produce the best possible project that will reduce potential land use conflicts to the maximum extent feasible. And I think part of that process will be to to identify additional mitigation measures that that can and should be implemented and and is required under SEQA to be implemented to make sure that potential impacts are reduced to the maximum extent feasible. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. It's already been a long morning, but just wanted to say that we look, I look forward to working with the county, working with the other development stakeholders to make sure that the right set of mitigations are implemented to to reduce potential impacts to to the site and to reduce potential impacts to the land uses that are proposed to to develop within that area. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Scott Johnson, Bancroft Road, Auburn. I've reviewed the county's draft EIR for the proposed Sunset Area and Placer Ranch plans, and I have questions, comments, and concerns that I respectfully request be addressed by the county. Table 2-1 of the executive summary lists the 57 significant unavoidable environmental impacts that would result from implementing the SAP, and some of these impacts are unavoidable because they're outside the jurisdiction of the county, like the expansion of the Pleasant Grove Retention Facility in the City of Roseville. The environmental document for the expansion of this facility to accommodate the stormwater from the SAP has not been created, yet the SAP relies entirely on this expansion. And I question whether it's even legal for Placer County to proceed with the SAP process under this tenuous situation. There's no guarantee that there will be any place for the stormwater runoff from the SAP to go. Section 3-4 of the project description contains the goals and objectives of both the SAP and PRSP, but the SAP and PRSP are in conflict with these goals in many areas, and my additional written comments will address a number of these conflicts, but here's a couple. The goal, one goal of the PRSP is to foster sustainable community design by aiding the county in achieving its objectives for long-term sustainability through project design and building practices that incorporate measures to reduce energy, conserve water, incorporate water-efficient landscaping, treat stormwater, and reduce reliance on the automobile. However, the project design does not meet these goals. The citizen-initiated Smart Growth Plan, which is being provided to you as an alternative to the SAP, does go much farther in every one of the above-listed long-term sustainability goals. I think it would be prudent for you to recirculate the draft EIR and to allow a full and thorough analysis of the Alliance for Environmental Leadership's citizen-initiated Smart Growth Plan. Another goal of the PRSP is to enable blueprint consistency, create a development plan that's consistent with the growth principles identified in Sacramento Area Council of Government Blueprint, which consists of providing high-density residential neighborhoods, more compact forms of development, alternative transportation options such as bus rapid transit and bicycle use, and the interconnected network of residential neighborhoods, commercial nodes, and employment centers.
Thank you, sir.
The plan fails to meet the SAICOG blueprints, and it fails to provide bus rapid transit compliant development.
Thank you.
But the citizen plan does. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm William Waters. I am a board member of SARSIS. We will be, William Waters of Clipper Gap in lifetime resident of Placer County. As SARSIS, we will be commenting, most of our concerns are with water flow and so forth, the pollution, et cetera. So making it brief, a lot of my concerns have been addressed, but with Jeffrey Moss, I agree. The rail track should be penciled in as a railroad track, not just to the industrial sites, but it should go to the transfer station, because sooner or later, we're going to be in the same boat as Sacramento County. They're pushing development out towards their dump and the old Red Ring site, and we're going to have to truck that over the Sierras, but better to put it on trains, and that's the only place the landfill is going to be suitable for that. As a, I've also been an elected member of the Auburn Recreation District Board, so I know how boards are supposed to run and in a representative marquee seat. There's a real problem with this. This has been rolled out from the top down, just like a Communist-Chinese plan. A lot of these boards supervisors have already stated that they are driving this plan, and we taxpayers are outraged that we have had to spend millions of dollars for our supervisors to turn our planners into shills for Angelus Hukopoulos and Eli Broad.
Jean Piety. Hey, maybe she's left next. Three, Veronica Blake, Emily Ward, and Leslie Warren.
Veronica Blake, Placer Community Foundation. I'm here today to talk about affordable housing in this project. Although the high density doesn't necessarily mean affordable, it wasn't clear to us why the number of high-density residential units were reduced from the original plan. The EIR doesn't provide a detailed jobs housing balance analysis that evaluates whether the plan provides sufficient housing to accommodate the salaries of the new workforce in the plan area. The EIR states that the plan will comply with the county's requirement of providing 10% residential units in specific plans to be affordable, but it doesn't provide the specifics on how it will implement housing policies B4, B6, and B13. What we want to know is will the affordable units will be, will they be spread throughout the different subdivisions, or are they going to be concentrated in one area? The EIR should also clarify that student housing will not count towards the development's affordable housing requirements. In-Luffy should not be accepted for the construction of the affordable, for construction of affordable units. The project's impact to affordable housing will be significant, and housing element policy should be used as mitigation measure to help reduce the severity of the impact. As required by Government Code 65454, a specific plan needs to be consistent with the county's general plan, and this project should be consistent with the other project EIRs within the county. Given the challenges and constructing of affordable housing and subsidies that are needed to get those units constructed, the affordable unit should receive priority for access to infrastructure, transit, and they should also not have the additional costs associated with being located in the floodplain. It doesn't appear that any land has been set aside for future light rail or some form of mass transit, and a question, other than the bus stops, and a question that comes to mind is, is the density going to be high enough to support rapid transit? And then lastly, I would just add that we remain concerned about the health impacts of reducing the buffer zone and placing residential near the landfill. It seems that the county years ago had a policy that that buffer zone made a lot of sense, but now that they're developing the project, it doesn't, I don't understand why that buffer zone would be reduced. Thanks for allowing us to comment.
Hello, my name is Emily. I am a concerned resident of Roseville, and so I was looking over the draft EIR, and Roseville intersections are already operating at a suboptimum level, and this plan would allow our intersections to operate at Level F, which is the lowest you can go, and this would cause an additional 200 seconds of wait time per vehicle, which would cause a lot of clogging in our intersections. Furthermore, this project does not reserve future transit options, like many of the supporters were suggesting previously. In fact, this plan, the Sunset Area Plan, is an urban sprawl, and only 17% of it is planned as a structure. As far as the environmental impacts, each year, this plan will add a combined 600,000 metric tons of CO2 per year, not to mention that this suggested buffer zone of 2,000 feet from a landfill will affect children who will be participating in schools, young people who will be participating in colleges, and folks who would be representative of workforce housing, which I don't believe is fair. The county in their scoping session have established objectives for this project under SEQA. The project must meet these objectives, and on ever, and on almost every objective, this county has failed to do so. So thank you very much for this opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
After Leslie Warren, Albert Shiber, Richard Choi, Cheryl Burkema.
My name is Leslie Warren. I'm representing the 14 organizations affiliated with the Alliance for Environmental Leadership, so please afford me five minutes. The Alliance for Environmental Leadership, as I mentioned, is 14 organizations that have organized to address projects of regional significance. This project is one of regional significance. We have developed, by our initiative and own funding, a parallel development plan for the site, which is called the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan, and I'd like to have it entered into the record that the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan is, if we were to compare the county's objective fulfillment in the draft EIR with the project as proposed and with the project that we are proposing, the fulfillment of the county objectives are met with the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan, where they are not met with the county's proposed project, and therefore, we respectfully request that the draft EIR be recirculated and the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan be evaluated as the environmentally superior alternative six. The staff made a lengthy presentation to you today, but I feel that a sense of scale about this project was omitted. The footprint of this project is comparable to the existing city of Roseville. The generation of CO2 gases is 550,000 metric tons annually, and a metric ton exceeds an American ton by 25%. The number of new daily vehicular trips on our existing roadways is 900,000 new vehicles. And when we collect fees to remedy impacts of these new vehicles on intersections, the fees don't generate at the onset of the impact, they accumulate over time, and then there's a huge design, construction, condemnation, demolition, period, whenever these intersections will be brought forward is to mitigate the impacts that the EIR addresses. So for the county to go forward with with a project before the impacts are adequately addressed at the onset, I feel is irresponsible governance. Basically, we feel that we're evaluating the adequacy of an EIR and evaluating, that is evaluating a plan that in its basic framework is so egregious, that it creates the environmental impacts itself. And were we to step back and, and that the EIR basically is band-aiding impacts in a plan that is structurally flawed, and were we to step back and approach development of the site in the way that we have done through the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan, at a framework scale, we would address the significant and unavoidable impacts that the Environmental Impact Report has identified. And just an example, were the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan to be adopted, greenhouse gas emissions would be reduced by 75%, and that would be by implementing the county's own declared intention in the objectives to create compact, compact communities. In the county's plan, the jobs housing balance is 22 jobs for one home, and inasmuch as most of the homes in the Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch Development, are to be built for primary, primary wage earners, and most of the employees in the industrial area are going to be hourly, blue-collar workers. The jobs housing balance is even more egregious than, than 22 to 1, because the people that can least afford to commute are going to be the ones commuting to this site because of the housing mix it's proposed. In the Citizen Initiated Smart Growth Plan, the jobs housing balance is three jobs to one home. You may know that the SAICOG recommended jobs housing balances two jobs to one home, and we do this by compact development and integrating the workers with with their own residences. Finally, the EIR fails to relocate the university out of the smell zone in any of its alternatives. We've relocated it out of the smell zone. We've relocated it out of the smell zone, which I think if the county's objective is to bring a high-class university to Placer County, it's going to need to move it out of the residential smell zone and off of 300 acres of high-quality vernal pools.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Albert Shiber, resident of Lincoln. My family has a ranch just north of your project. I attended a scoping meeting early on for this project. I made comments in the NOP. I was disappointed to find out those comments would not be answered, they would be considered. I know a lot of other people made comments in the NOP, and I assume they're getting the same treatment. That's kind of disappointing, because it seems like comments and so on and so forth are just going to get swept under the rug and disregarded, which is a shame. I also find it troubling that at least two developers tried to, tried to make this project work, private developers, and could not. So it baffles me why the county would take on a project that private citizens could not do at the taxpayer's expense. So I have a lot of issues with the EIR itself. There's a lot of inconsistencies in it. I can, I can see I'm running short on time, so you'll be getting written comments from us during that comment period. One of the issues I have is with the groundwater, and how your project's going to affect the groundwater in the area and the sub-basin. I believe that's all just been swept under the rug. No, no consequences there. Even though the county has, Placer County Water Agency has two wells, you're proposing two more wells, you're going to use them in the dry period as emergency backup is what it states. And if you look at what Lincoln's passed, Lincoln has existing ground wells that they pull out of, they use a 10% goal, nothing committing them to that. They want to put six more wells in for the Village Five project, which unfortunately we're located in, as, also, they want to use it in times of backup or drought. So I would like to know, when drought hits, and you all turn your pumps on, how is that going to affect my well and my water rights? Because none of that's addressed in your EIR. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Berkama. I'm a Placer County resident, and I'm representing Defend Granite Bay, so I'd like five minutes, please. In December 2018, several Concerned citizens made public and written requests of Placer Planning that the many projects that were being introduced by Planning be rescheduled and staggered appropriately to allow time for public review. Time extensions were also requested due to the excessive document sizes, which were far beyond CEQA guidelines. Many of these projects were thousands of pages in length. In addition, several major hearings were also scheduled within the same timeframe, such as zoning tax amendments, there are a list of others. Our concern is, the Sunset Area Plan, the largest regional project known, was introduced during this onslaught of document dumping, again overwhelming the public. The county's website has actually been in a state of migration the past three days. This was also done during almost a month of federal shutdown. So for people to be able to contact the federal government on housing, federal environment issues, and for the Placer County Conservation Program, the timing, I would say, was not really optimal, and would suggest that 2019 120-day review be generated with the addition of the plan that Leslie Warren mentioned for the Citizens Initiated Growth Plan. I think that CEQA's purpose is to inform decision-makers, and if, if we don't get the opportunity to actually respond and reply, because we're inundated with so many thousands of pages of documents, that we're not doing CEQA justice, and, and we're in violation there. And the Sunset Industrial Plan was previously, approximately a decade ago, made great promises, however the project objectives were not realized. The Sunset Area Plan was shown not to be economically feasible, the huge associated price tag we had to pay as residents, and now we're doing the same thing. We already, we would like a response as to, for all the documentation, thousands of pages again, that have been produced, who is paying for this? There are no, the Sunset Area Plan DEIR is deficient in the following areas also. I'll skip over the ones that have already been mentioned, but there are no developers committed to the Sunset Area Plan, putting the county and taxpayers at significant risk. The county is the applicant and the approver, which is a conflict of interest. The county has failed to show that the project is economically feasible. There are no innovators mentioned in the DEIR. Stating you're creating an innovation center doesn't mean they will come. No university is committed to the Sacramento Area Plan. So what you saw up there is pie in the sky. No one has signed from a university. Two other universities have already said that they are not willing to, and have dropped out of the race in terms of putting a university there. Again, objectives are not being met, met for that university. It would destroy significant vernal pools, habitats, and endangered species, and as the planner, we are very disappointed that the planner said that CEQA and NEPA are not being used as responses to all the mitigations. So someone owes a response to the 44 pages of significant unavoidable impacts, and to put a box around yourself and say that you're not responsible is putting your head in the sand. We, we are owed those responses from both CEQA and NEPA, on the wetlands, both US and on the California environmental impacts. It's not energy efficient, and there is no mention, we are living in the 21st century, there's no mention of any alternative energies being produced. To have a project of this scale, there should be solar, some things that are being presented. Also, the, in terms of mitigations, CEQA does not allow the promise of future action associated with mitigation measures that are currently not feasible or funded. Placer County Conservation Program has not been adopted, therefore is not a mitigation measure. So anything that's current law should be represented as a mitigation measure, and I think you're violating the law by not doing that. A project of this magnitude requires more than a workshop, a public hearing, and an article in the Sacramento Bee. I think that it has not been socialized, if you ask almost any resident in Sacramento or Placer County, they will go, oh yeah, I think I saw that picture. They will have no clue the size and impact that's being suggested today. So again, I would suggest that the county spend more money on socializing this project. And I think you have an opportunity, you had a world-class designer that has done designs for some of the most innovative countries in the world present this Citizens Plan. I hope you understand the gift that you've been given, and consider that as an option, and put it in the EIR. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did we skip Richard?
Yeah, so I had Richard Choi was still on the list, and then last one, Angela Torrens. Last two names on the list.
Angela, come on, come on up.
Hi, my name is Angela Torrens. I'm a resident of Rockland. I'm a former CPAC Chair of the Franklin Laguna area, and during the time when I reviewed several developments coming into the Elk Grove area before they were incorporated, I did so on behalf of the county supervisors. And at the time, I noted there was a great deal of work put into the specific plans, a great deal of work concerning the mitigating circumstances that the residents might have to experience due to the sewer treatment plan in Elk Grove. I noted that there were several similar problems that I see in this, these particular plans today. I also noted that, from my knowledge of the CEQA law, there are requirements that whenever there are significant unavoidable impacts, however, before that, that particular classification becomes or is deemed acceptable, it should be fully vetted by not only the public, but you here at the Planning Commission. And that when you are vetting these significant and unavoidable impacts, whether they're air, transportation, and these are great impacts in this large, large, large project, that you give yourself enough time to reach to various studies and other policies and programs that might support the build-out of this particular plan. I noted that when I was in Elk Grove, that the plans after Laguna Town Hall was built were, were approved by the public generally because there was promises they would bring jobs to the area. Those promises never really fully materialized. The area became a bedroom community at, you know, at the opposition of many of the people who live there. They were crying about having to commute long distances to work. These are the same experiences we have in Placer County. I'm a 24-year transit pedestrian taker, you might say. I took, I availed myself of all transit services in Placer County. I was never able to take any type of a metro downtown, but I went through various cars using them in traveling. And I really don't want to put that same kind of pressure on our future residents here in Placer County with build-out that doesn't take into serious consideration the significant and avoidable circumstances. And I say they're avoidable, because I really would like to plead to you today that you find studies, whether they be through SECO or the Air Resources Board, or through various cities who have had similar projects approved, you find those studies that have significantly, if not successfully, mitigated the significant impacts upon the public, the public health, and our children in the future. And thank you very much for having me today.
Thank you.
So some folks might have signed up on a list for the other projects, so maybe a good time just to open it up for anybody else who would like to comment on Sunset Area Plan, Placer Ranch.
Is there anybody else who, who did not sign up, who would like to, to address the commission now?
I actually believe he did sign up, but anyway. My name is Don Ravines. I'm with the Sierra Fudos Audubon Society, and our members are in Placer County and in Nevada County. And these comments on behalf of our Audubon Society. In impact, I'm going to speak mainly on greenhouse gas emissions. Impact measure 4.7.2 says this impact would be significant in operational greenhouse gas emissions. Various mitigations are proposed, but are still considered significant and unavoidable. One of the, what they're talking about is conforming to Title 16 building standards, and that will reduce some of the emissions. But there's a Title 16 is now Title 19, which is going to be enforced on January 1, 2020. And I went read from that. California's 2019 Buildings Energy Efficiency Standards officially take effect on January 1. Single-family homes built with the 2019 standards will use about 7% less energy due to energy efficiency measures versus those built under the 2016 standards. Once rooftop solar electricity generation is factored in, homes built under the 2019 standards will use about 53% less energy than those of the 2016 standards. This will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 700,000 metric tons over three years in California. So we ask that even if building permits are granted this year, given the climate emergency and the California renewable goals, that these projects be required to meet the 2020 Title 24, Chapter 6 Building Rules of Zero Net Energy for all single residential, residential homes in the project area. This would reduce your mitigation requirements for this particular project. You may even be completely unavoidable, avoidable at that point, once you admit, use the 2019 standards. And I don't know whether how many permits are going to be allowed before 2020, but I guess at this point, you may not have any. There's also the, by 2030, all non-residential for homes, buildings are supposed to reach zero net efficiency also. In lieu of a climate crisis, I would ask that you implement those standards also for non-residential in this area. You also have certain policies where you are going to encourage people to do things that they should do things, but we ask that the county include the actual lead rating system set standards that will indicate whether the developer has made sufficient effort to actually implement the standards that are actually in use in the building industry. The county EIR must show the projected greenhouse gas emissions after the required changes are made. And finally, just one point that I noticed, there's nothing in here about requiring solar to be used anywhere. Many places like in Nevada County, we have solar farms being proposed. Solar farms would therefore be providing renewable energy, and that might again meet the mitigation problems of this project if they had solar providing the energy for the, this project. Other questions we raise are the paths through this, you mentioned all kinds of trails, they could use compacted crushed rocks, cheaper, faster, permeable, and produces less CO2 emissions than concrete. You could ban grass lawns for water conservation, leading to less energy use. You could use only lead, lead only with nighttime glare minimized. Electric charge, car charges for apartment use, smart glass, electrochromatic windows, drought-resistant trees, solar PV in all parking lots. There's a lot of things that aren't mentioned in this that would actually make this project more likely to be mitigatable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good afternoon. I expected it to be morning, however, and happy Valentine's Day. My name is Barbara Ravines, and I live in Nevada County. But I'm very, very interested in this plan, because as a resident of Nevada County for 22 years, about the age of the first inception of this plan, I believe, I, resident, I, I don't pay taxes here, and I vote for the, I don't vote for the politicians making decisions in Placer County, but I do absorb the GHGs, the ozone, and the ever-increasing vehicular traffic in the region, and the loss of open space vernal pools, and I'm not especially happy about that. We've been residents of California for about 52 years, a special and stunning place, as the state is, and in those 52 years, it's changed dramatically in this area from the open dotted landscape that once was rural Nevada, Placer County. Today, we discuss another Placer project, opening the county to more sprawl, adding 575,000, 500,000 metric tons per year of greenhouse gases, emissions from the projected 870 daily vehicular trips from the assortment of new housing and industry in the, in the Sunset Plan. The Sunset Plan will encompass about 14 square miles of primarily wetland, grassland, farmland, and give us a new city covering about 80% of the surface, parking, and the remainder with buildings. The housing is to be primarily low-density, not at all what's needed in the changing demographics and economics of our current world. It does take into consideration, however, the jobs, but nearby, however, it's giving us more car travel trips in an already congested area underserved by public transit. For me, the most glaring, glaring and disturbing aspect of this plan is its utter lack of imagination and concern for climate, and what we're witnessing, what we're witnessing today, actually in real time. We have atmospheric rivers with unprecedented catastrophic fires in our region, every state and every state in the West, the polar vortex. The End of Ice is a new book which describes the absolute hourly loss of ice in our polar regions, spelling an evolution of a whole new climate system. And yet, this plan is not taking into consideration any of the, of the world that we are going to be facing in the future. I, I just urge you to move into this plan that has been described, the Citizen Initiative, Citizen Initiative, plan that about, that Leslie has described, and I'd like to urge you to do that. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Connie Shiber. We have a ranch north of your project in Lincoln. First, I want to read a part of the EIR, just a small part. The project will result in the conversion of 72, 7,295 acres of farmland, although the actual total would be less because of the fact of the Pleasant, some areas, the Pleasant Grove retention facility property would likely continue to be farmed, although that's not a guarantee. The project will result in the conversion of almost 600,000. The project will result in the conversion of almost 6%, let me say that again, 6% of Placer County's total farmland. This is a considerable contribution to the, this is a considerable contribution to the significant cumulative impact associated with overall farmland conversion in the region. My understanding is Placer County is a right-to-farm county. We're supposed to be pro-ag. Once you convert 6% of Placer County's available farmland out of production, that can never be reclaimed. It's gone. It's gone for good. So I'm not really sure how that is pro-ag. The other point I'd like to make is the EIR relies on several entities, I guess, for lack of a better term, that are not really entities yet. The first one is troubling, the Placer County Conservation Program, PCCP. We've been trying to get a draft of that program for probably at least two years. As far as I know, that's still not available for public review. So you're relying on a program that even the public can't look at it and see what it's about. The Pleasant Grove Retention Facility, as far as I know, that's still not an entity. They already talked about the O4 Water Treatment Plant is not yet even started, no ground broken. And also, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan, we go to all those meetings, and I know for sure that that one's not an entity yet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Matt Wheeler, Community Development Director for the City of Lincoln. First, I want to say that we consider ourselves a development partner with the county in moving forward with the growth plans for Western Placer. And as such, we appreciate the time that your staff has taken to meet with us, to talk through this project, our concerns, and look through mitigating the issues that have been identified. One item that we'd like to highlight today is in relation to the landfill buffer. And in a nutshell, it's this, the reduction of the setback in that buffer area for the landfill is not a benefit to rate pairs, solid waste rate pairs in Placer County and the City of Lincoln and other jurisdictions that are outside this plan area. And as such, we don't believe that any of the costs associated with that reduction of the landfill buffer should be borne by rate pairs outside of that plan area. With that, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with your staff in identifying issues and working through mitigations for growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. I guess that's it for this item. There's no action to be taken. So with that, I think we're going to take about a 15-minute break here. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nader.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the public a little chance to put in. You guys want that? There you go. I first want to say that I think with the rest of the commissioners, have a lot of time going through piles of documents on this. And there's one section that I have to say I'm absolutely well dirt by, and that is relation to, you've already heard some comments on it, the landfill and Placer Ranch. And it seems to me that as you read that section, it seems like there should be lots of red lights flashing, like, okay, don't do this. So I just wanted to highlight just a couple of them as I go through this, and I'll try to be very brief on it. The, obviously, the policy, I'm going to go by page on this, 4.10 through 8. And the policy, the 4G 11, obviously, the thing that jumps out to me is that that policy states that the landfill is a dominant land use in the area, and the, and it is set up to protect these facilities from compatibility. And that should get your attention right away. And the, and then 4.10.14, as we are looking at the consideration of lessening that one-mile buffer, incompatibility sort of jumps out right away as soon as that is addressed. And it is expected that complaints lodged about the nuisance orders would increase. And that could interfere with the ability for the landfill to expand or modify needed operations. The impacts to land, land use of landfill are potentially significant, which is something we hear a lot in this section. And then, as referenced by one of the speakers, 4.10 through 15 mentions the Placer County Air Pollution Control District Handbook, and that it also has protection of buffer within a mile. And it says also that it is to protect the incompatibility of approachment of development. The landfill is an important and valuable county asset, has been, will continue to be, as you heard, the operations go out to 2028, I believe. And then residential encroachment in that section, it also residential encroachment could create pressure on the landfill operations, resulting in the need to entertain other solutions. And then in that section, it all says would likely be infeasible, given the cost. So it is likely that residential development anywhere in Placer Ranch specific plan would be subject to odor from the landfill. So we're not just talking about, you know, 1,000 or 2,000 feet that they may be impacted, but throughout the whole project. If the last restricted buffer amendment is amended with residential development closer to the landfill, it would result in incompatible uses with the landfill, and incompatible is something we hear a lot of in this section. The odor complaints going to 4.10 to 16, odor complaints about the landfill could result in enforcement action and/or amplification of additional odor controls, which we've heard from one of the speakers as well. Comparing other landfills to the one in Placer County, in my opinion, is meaningless. Every landfill has unique, conditions that are very unique. The terrain and atmospheric conditions play a large role in the impact to use surrounding the landfill. You know, and this is not theoretical. We're not saying, talking about the possibility of issues. We know we already have issues within a mile. So to me, I mean, we're already, we're just opening it up to more issues. Then 4.10 through 17, pressure for the landfill to implement additional odor controls. Okay, that's in there. Enclosing compost operations counter to what it stated in the report. It stated that those costs are not, would not be that significant. I don't know if any of you have been out to the landfill. The green operation is gigantic. The windrows are very significant, and to try to cover that would be an extremely expensive process. And it really, I mean, from a standpoint of, okay, you cover it, where does that odor go anyway? It's all going to be exhausted at some point, and especially in the heated times of the year, those enclosed structures are going to obviously cook whatever's in there. And so I'm saying resulting of that, doing that doesn't ensure that the odors from the operation would continue. Transportation, what I'm addressing is what they're saying a landfill could do to mitigate the impact of the surrounding community. Transporting waste to another facility would be extremely costly. Finding an alternative, isolated, non-controversial location within the county to process material or green waste would be nearly impossible. And I think that, you know, in this study, I think if we're looking for alternatives, that needs to be looked at more closely if we think that that really is a feasible alternative. So-called odor neutralizing misters do not eliminate odors, they only cover them up. It's obviously very heavily perfumed. I guess lavender smell might be better than what's coming out of the, of the facility, but I think the effectiveness is pretty questionable. No compensation, and I think this is really important because it doesn't say this anywhere in the report, and it needs to address it. No compensation from the developer or the county has been offered. So the costs related to minimizing the impact of landfill on nearby properties would have to be absorbed by the rate pairs, somebody else brought that up as well, which constitutes a large segment of the Placer County population. So I think for one project, we're, we're forcing this on the rest of all of Western Placer County to offset the cost of the impact. And that really was not addressed. I think that needs to, and I'm saying that needs to evaluate the impact of the rate pair. Then 4.10 through 18, I want, I have a question, and this addresses where the project can do things to offset the impact odor impacts or the impact of landfill. And where have building designs, landscaping designs, and deed restrictions proven truly to lessen the complaints related to the landfill, especially odor impacts? I think it doesn't really say that they have experience in other areas. I think it needs to. These major measures would not eliminate the source of odor. It actually, you know, states that. Therefore, this impact would be significant and unavoidable. I'm almost done. 4.63 through six, 4.6, excuse me, 4.36. Need to specify that the reference to alternate daily cover, and more particularly sludge, as it was mentioned, is sewage waste from the nearby Lincoln Water Treatment Plant. It is used to help facilitate the breakdown of waste material on the landfill. The sewage waste was noted as a high contributor to the detection of offensive, offensive odors coming from the landfill. So I think that really needs to be addressed about the impact of this sewage sludge that's coming is into the facility. And it doesn't adequately, just briefly mentioned sludge. Okay, I've counted eight times where incompatibility and questioned compatibility were mentioned in relationship to the landfill operations and residential development. Seems like a clear signal that this project, as currently presented, is not wise and would have wide-ranging negative implications to the residents of Placer County. In my opinion, we are trying to force the proverbial square peg into a round hole. This plan needs to accommodate the landfill rather than the landfill accommodating the plan. I believe the real test of whether this plan is based on reasonable, acceptable facts is whether the developer or those that prepared the report or any of you in this room would want to live or have any of your family members live in this community. If you're truly being honest, I think we're going to serve, as you know. That's my comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that, I think we'll take 15 before we get back to our next item. Thank you.[1367.33] Thank you.[167.34][167.34][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12][171.12]
All right, are we ready to start with our, what is it? Actually, a 1130 item?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Jennifer Bias, Placer County Planning Division here to present the Quarry Ridge Office Professional Park. Today's meeting, again, like your prior meeting, is to take public comment on the draft EIR that's currently out for public comment. This is encouraged by the SEQUA guidelines as well as county policy. Standard notification was done for this draft EIR through this notice of availability. We notified the surrounding property owners, people that provided comments on the notice of preparation. Typical provide information in the libraries, host or provide a legal notice to the SACV and to our state and federal agencies, school districts. So I'll get into a little bit of background on the project. It's a 3.23 acre site located in Granite Bay. To the north, our residence, shown in the red, is our project site. To the east is House of Worship. To the south is Commercial Quarry Ponds. And to the west is a vacant lot, but there was a project proposed here called Granite Bay Medical Offices. It's on hold right now. The site is bound to the west by Berg Street and to the south by Douglas Boulevard. This is a photograph of the site from the east end of the project along Douglas, looking west. It shows that the site's relatively level and slopes upwards towards a small knoll. In addition, the site has mixed oak woodland and grassland. This is the site plan proposed for the project. What's being proposed is an office complex with four different buildings. The first building, which is 3,200 square feet, would be a office building for general office use. And the buildings two, three, and four would be for medical use. And they range from 4,000 to 5,500 square feet. Vehicle access to the site would be provided along Berg Street through a gated access coming into the driveway, which has a parking lot behind the buildings for 92 spaces with a turnaround with additional parking provided between buildings three and four. The gate along the access would be closed at night but open during business hours. Pedestrian access would be provided from sidewalks along Berg as well as a sidewalk along Douglas and coming up to the parking lot. On the top here, we have a site photo looking northeast from Berg and the Douglas intersection, as well as a color rendering from the same viewpoint showing what the proposed project would look like as well as a rendering of a gate. Again, this is another site photo with the, looking from Quarry Ponds to the north with a color rendering of the same view. This is actually the grading plan, and the site will be graded in one phase and will require some import of soil, around 3,500 cubic feet. And the additional site improvements will be additional pavement along Berg and frontage improvement, including curb gutter and sidewalk, as well as grading along Douglas Boulevard. It's about 20 feet of grading that's going to happen along Douglas Boulevard. And as you see on our grading plan and in this cross-section here, it's proposed to be terraced back in six to 10-foot steps on the west end of the project. And then the terracing where it's more level down here will be consistent with grade. The site's being graded back, however, the future improvements along that site for a turn lane and then the ultimate location for the curb gutter and sidewalk would go in in the future. But they're coming in and doing the grading now. A landscape plan for the site and fencing, fencing along six-foot-high split-faced masonry wall on the north of the property, along with screening trees in the landscape islands and along the property, general landscaping along Douglas and in the knoll area of Landscape Knoll. There are an existing 29 trees on the site. 14 are proposed to be removed and 15 are proposed to be retained. The site's proposed to be developed in two phases. The first phase would be building one approximately located here. And then the second phase would be constructing all the additional improvements for the parking lot. And then the buildings would be phased in. The entitlements proposed for this project includes a Granite Bay Community Plan Amendment from Low Density Residential Commercial. As addition, some modification to language for the Douglas Boulevard setback standard, rezoning the property from its current single-family zoning into office professional with design review requirements. They're proposing a tentative map to create four parcels, one that encompasses both, most of the building or each of the buildings, as well as design review. This project actually started back in June of 2016 at the Granite Bay MAC. And then there was a notice of preparation published that included an initial study checklist. Public scoping happened back in September of 2017. And we're here today during the public comment period for the draft EIR. Again, the initial study that was included in the notice of preparation provided for no impacts or less insignificant for most of the environmental categories and/or included environmental categories as shown on the screen that were considered less insignificant with mitigation included. There were only two items that this draft EIR actually analyzed, two resource topics, including noise and transportation circulation. They both discussed impacts for this, these proposed areas and concluded ultimately that there was no significant impacts. There are recommended mitigation measures that are being proposed for various transportation improvements as well as some mitigation for HVC noise. As with all EIRs, there was a range of alternatives presented. The no project and the existing zoning are ultimately the same project, which under today's zoning, they could develop approximately six single-family residential houses. They also analyzed a reduced intensity, which would have eliminated building four and dropped the square footage down to 5,510 square feet. The environmentally superior alternative was considered in the draft EIR as the reduced intensity alternative. Again, we're here for opportunity for public comment. The draft EIR public comment period ends on March 7th. And then we will be processing those comments, responding to the comments, and then coming back to your commission for a recommendation on this one. And with that, I will conclude my presentation, see if you have any questions.
I have one, Jennifer, maybe this is for Phil's over there. It relates to the intersection of Douglas and Berg. And you mentioned the development that's on hold just to the west of this one. Was it ever envisioned to have a light at that intersection at some point in the future? Based on?
I'm going to let Phil answer that one.
So it's been talked about. The community has not been interested in a signal at that location. They did not want, you know, as many signals as there are out there.
What's the nearest one to that intersection?
Probably Barton, I'm thinking.
And which would be how far?
How far?
Three quarters of a mile.
Three quarters of a mile, something like that? That's a pretty good distance. So I'm just thinking of, you know, obviously there's pretty heavy traffic on Douglas and whether people who are trying to make a left and turn off of, coming off of Berg would have some challenges getting across there and go to the next intersection, turn to come around. Yeah, at this time.
I think, you know, we've, since we're in all these previous developments along here, we've addressed that issue. And if I remember right, the distance between the two lights actually meters of traffic. And that's been the answer, at least I've heard. You can elaborate on that, yes, but.
So there's breaks, obviously, that allow people to make those left.
Yeah, that would be correct. With the signals, there's enough breaks that people can make the movements that they're needed. And yes, there will be some vehicles that need to travel to different intersections to make your turns to come back to go in the opposite direction.
Any else?
Well, sorry to have such a controversial project.
I have one question.
Don't sit down yet, Jennifer.
One question. And if it's in the report and I missed it, my apologies. But I know that note that it's going to be gated. And maybe that's the wave of the future for these kind of office buildings. But what kind of emergency access or exit is there for egress?
And they would, I can also let Phil answer if I go out of step here, but the fire department would require the standard Knox box with key be provided. So if there was any emergency situation. But it's my understanding from the applicant that they're just trying to prevent people, since it's only open during certain hours, from going back into that parking lot because it isn't really visible from the street, from getting back there and creating problems for the community.
So the, so the gate would be open during business hours?
Correct.
And it's only after business hours?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any else? No, you're done.
Okay.
I guess at this point.
Would just like to note for the record that there's no members of the public here to comment.
Okay, that makes that easy. So we will close the public comment portion of this. And with that, I think we're all done. Thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.